Okay, folks, we're gonna get ready to go live here.
You guys.
Okay, we are live. Welcome staff and council to this evening's regular session of council for December the 15th, as well as those that are watching. This is being livestreamed on the Towns YouTube channel and you can get access through the agenda on our website. Before I call a meeting to order, earlier in December, we did lose a past council member in Andrew Gonzalez, who served on council from December of 2000 till October of 2002, representing Ward 1. Andrew was very, very, very interested in council and always did his best to present what he thought was best for ratepayers, and we thank him for his service. We also want to make sure that his family hears that we are very sympathetic to his passing. He enjoyed his lifestyle on Sherman's Point with friends and family, and sorry to see him go. He was a wonderful, wonderful man and a good addition to our municipality, so I didn't want this to go by without being mentioned. So therefore, I will call a meeting to order, and I need an adoption of the agenda to be amended as follows. We are going to move Agenda Item 11.1, Staff Reports, Community and Corporate Services, Attainable Housing Project, to follow Agenda Item 6.1, the deputation of Connor Dory from the County of Lennox and Addington. Also, to add an Agenda Item 11.2, Staff Reports, CAO OPP Contract Renewal Correspondence Received from Ken Key OPP dated December the 15th, 2020. I would entertain a motion to adopt as amended, Councilor McCormack, Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? I will be declaring a conflict of interest in the whole or entire section of 4, 4.1, 4.2, as well as 4.3, as this public meeting under the Planning Act involves a family member. I'll turn the meeting over, the chair, over to you, Deputy Mayor Kaiser. I'll leave the room.
Okay, I'm gonna stay in my spot, spreading Christmas cheer and not COVID, according to the sign in front of Rexall there, as it says now. So, I need a resolution to convene a public meeting under the Planning Act. The public meeting under the Planning Act is hereby convened. Councilor Purnell, Councilor Richardson, thank you. All in favor? Carried. So, we have a zoning amendment application, PLZACO 2020-059. The applicant is 1966780Ontario Limited. Legal Plan 1175, Lot 23, Town of Greater Napanee, otherwise known as Address 319 Ginger Street. The effect of the application would be to permit the construction of a semi-detached dwelling house on the property. The current residential type R1 does not permit the construction of a semi-detached dwelling. I'm used to seeing the gallery. Is there anybody here in the back room at all?
Just the person that submitted the comment.
Just the person that submitted the comment. So, we did receive a letter, and what's this, does that go through you to be entered into the minutes of the meeting?
Yes, if you'd like to read the letter.
Okay. So, we received a letter from Ken and Kathy McDonald, to whom it may concern. Our home is located at 313 Ginger Street, Napanee, which is west of the lot in question. One of our main concerns is safety. Our home is located on a corner within, is located on a corner with another corner 30 to 40 meters west of us. That makes it very difficult to access the street to the point that we back our vehicles into our driveway. Our feeling is that two potential driveways on this property, along with the existing fire hydrant located between us, is going to reduce any area for street parking. If this is to become a rental property, it has been our observation on this street the potential for multiple cars per unit. In closing, we are concerned that overflow parking will have cars parked in front of our home on a regular basis, creating even more visibility issues with safely accessing the road. With the new subdivision going in, this too will naturally increase traffic flow in the area. Thank you from Ken and Kathy McDonald. So, we received that. And then, do we have anyone else speaking for or against?
No, we don't have any members of the public unless council wishes to speak.
Okay. So? Any questions from council to staff? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, as mayor, the, I don't have a problem with a duplex being installed on that lot. The drawings that we provided show that it's gonna be a well-construted building and it's gonna look beautiful in the neighborhood. There are no indications of where parking would be, which would obviously also be part of the concern of existing neighbors. Is there a way to get information on that? I wouldn't want to hold up the application in that, but I think maybe it might be something that they should consider as they build the unit.
Yeah, Michael knows is gonna come up and speak to that as far as what protocols are followed in the setting up.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So, regarding, regarding that comment, particularly with regard to onsite, on-street parking and the availability of off-street parking, staff proposed that the rezoning report that is to follow, so this is just a public meeting to gain public feedback and council feedback, staff proposed that the report, the Morefulsome Report, address these comments in particular and can provide some additional information for council's consideration.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just with regards to those questions, is there a possibility of front yard parking to be available for these units? Or does it have to be a grassed area with just a driveway?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, when you, when you say front yard parking, do you mean parking on the grass beside a driveway, or?
Or like double parking in front of the unit?
Third.
Because it is. I can understand the comments that are made with regards to how small the radius is. So, can you only install a driveway with parking in the back? Or can you install, can the tenant have two parking spaces in front of the unit without it breaking any bylaws? Or is there going to be a challenge with bylaws in that instance?
That's something that we can consider and review, as when staff are reviewing the application more thoroughly to bring back that information within a report. I feel like we will have room to accommodate two off-street parking in the front yard and the driveway there.
That's excellent. Thank you very much.
Anything further, Councilor Purnell?
Thank you, through you, worship, Michael. I know this lot very well. It's very heavily treed, and it looks like the unit gonna be going in will be a walkout. I'm just wondering, is there any EP on that lot at all at the back? Is it wet? Is there any restrictions?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, the lot does contain a rear yard catch basin, so stormwater from west, the westerly properties on the south side of Ginger Street, flow easterly into this catch basin. There is no EP zoning on the property. There is, however, a stormwater management easement running down the easterly side of the property, and that easement will not be infringed upon through the building.
Great. Thank you.
Councilor Richardson?
Thank you, worship. Just, it's more of a curiosity than anything. I see that it currently is serviced by two water and two services already, yet it was zoned for a single, what, is there, was it, was a zone in property to begin with, or what's the explanation, I guess?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, my, my thinking is that the zoning map was incorrectly applied way back when, because there are two, two services for it, and this was linked to the previous plan of subdivision for the area.
Which I think would probably make sense, and, okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. I have nothing, so thank you, Michael. And I guess that concludes it, then.
Just to adjourn me.
Yep. So, we need a motion to, a resolution to adjourn the public meeting. Councilor Johnson, Councilor McCormack, and all in favor? Thank you. And I'll head down and retrieve her worship. Do we have any presentations tonight? So, we'll be going to Connor.
Presentations, of which we have none, and deputations this evening. Connor Dory, Manager of Housing, County of Lennox and Addington, REPELIS Housing, and a local contact. Welcome, Connor. Nice to see you.
Nice to see everyone as well.
We're having pretty well just Zoom meetings at County Council, so Deputy Mayor Kaiser and I really just get to see you on a screen, on the Hollywood Square screen.
Well, it's kinda like a screen without plastic.
Connor, can you make sure that you pull the mic up as close to you as possible, please? It will have been sanitized.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's much better. Thank you very much. I will let you, welcome, and I will let you go ahead with your presentation, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First off, just wanna say thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to council this evening. It's often referred that we are in a housing crisis, and it is true, we are in a housing crisis nationally, provincially, and locally. A housing crisis that also is gonna be emphasized more so by the ongoing pandemic, and a housing crisis that is impacted by different factors, which include increased demands, lack of supply, the affordability issue, transportation. The list that impacts what the housing crisis is, is long and complex and is growing, so we really need to consider this. And that's what brings me here this evening as a representative of Prince Edward, Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services, who is the Service Manager for Housing in the counties of Prince Edward, Lennox, and Addington. I'm gonna take this opportunity to talk about the services that we offer with, we offer within our housing department, as well as the priorities that we see in moving forward, and also the importance of us working together with our local municipalities. There, just a quick overview might be on the screen there, but just to give you that background with who we are, so I'm sure you're aware, but in the year 2000, the County of Lennox and Addington was designated as a Consolidated Municipal Services Manager for the counties of both Prince Edward and Lennox and Addington, and through our Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services Department, commonly referred to as PELIS, various programs and services are delivered. These programs include children's services, Ontario Works, and housing services. And housing services is a wide range of different programs that are available and have a lot of, a large impact on our local communities. And when we look at our housing services, they are supported by the federal, provincial, and local municipalities. When we look at housing services, I like to look at it in three different frames. That is the rent gear-to-income frame, which is traditionally known as social housing or community housing. We have attainable housing options, which really encompasses a large range of different programs that work towards affordability, and then we have homelessness programs as well. When we look at our housing services, we really focus on the housing continuum, and the housing continuum is, at its simplest, the range of housing types available in a community, from emergency shelters on one end, all the way to homeownership on the other. In between lies an assortment of housing options and types, and each are critically important for the different people at different times. So, this housing continuum slide is the one slide that I would hope that you could take back with you this evening. We, within housing services, are involved in the early stages of the housing continuum, but we also understand that our impacts have influences on the later stages of the continuum, and we also recognize that different things can happen in any individual's life that may influence where they land on the housing continuum. So, when we look at our rent gear-to-income units, they are offered in many different ways. One of the ways is through our local housing corporation. So, the local housing corporation is directly operated by us at PELIS. We operate, maintain, and administer 413 rent gear-to-income units across 16 different properties in Prince Edward, Lennox, and Addington. The administration ensures that tenant's rent is calculated based on their income, and also that they remain eligible to receive the subsidy within their rent. We offer units for single units, family units, senior units, accessible units, and provide a key service across the area. RGI housing is also offered through six local nonprofit housing corporations in the area that are supported through PELIS financially, but also in programs. And lastly, we have rent supplement programs, which is housing in which payments are made directly to landlords on behalf of households who are in need of rental assistance. This assistance is calculated in the same way that you would see in an RGI unit within our local housing corporation, and also in the nonprofits. Just to give you some figures, currently, we have about 141 households that are assisted monthly through agreements we have with private landlords. We don't only offer rent gear-to-income options, we also offer various attainable housing options, which is, once again, a wide range of programs that encourage affordability, and in many cases, these do depend on the federal and provincial funding that becomes available. When we look at attainable housing options, some of them include homeownership programs, which help bridge the gap and provide forgivable loans to low to mid-income families to help them in the first purchase of a home. We work on private-public partnerships to encourage utilizing the strengths of the private market. I imagine on the screen there, you'll see four images of different housing options. Those are four local examples of partnerships we've had with the private market. The one that, in the middle there, is a key example of how we can be forward-thinking and innovative within our communities. That is a two-unit build that was done in Flinton, which really shows the importance of using the rural context while also being financially viable for the operator that can encourage more investment and participation from the private side. And then, lastly, we have the local housing corporation. So, we are mandated to provide a certain number of rent gear-to-income units. However, we are looking at opportunities to expand on our portfolio, and some of the ways we could do so are possibly through attainable housing options. There is a clear need for more housing in our communities, so this is one way that we could do so while also ensuring that we are financially viable. Another way we do provide services within housing is through homelessness. We provide supports to community partners that are working with people who are at risk or who are experiencing homelessness. We provide financial assistance to individuals who come to us in time of need to ensure that they can maintain their housing arrangements. We provide emergency shelter through motel, local motels and hotels to connect with individuals who seek that shelter, while also ensuring they're connected with their services, with services. And we look at opportunities to provide transitional housing to bridge that gap between homelessness and more long-term arrangements. In the package I did provide to council this evening, there are some business cards there that just provide that information of who you can contact in the event of somebody seeking for that emergency shelter support. So, based on this wide range of programs, I know I'm throwing a lot at you here, and there's a lot of different things that are involved within our portfolio, but we recognize that there is a change in environment, and we need to set priorities for the future, and while also considering the housing crisis. The housing crisis, very high level, can be based on demand. There is a clear demand for affordable housing that is growing over time. If we look at our centralized waitlist right now, which helps house tenants in our rent gear-to-income units, the nonprofits, and also rent supplement units, there is currently 700 households on that waitlist. To give you some context, too, three years ago, so January 1st, 2018, that waitlist was 500 households. So, in close to three years, we have seen a growth of over 200 households. This also doesn't include individuals and couples, families that may have applied, but their income would be too high, so they wouldn't be eligible to be on our waitlist, so that demand can, could, is, we can be confident that it is higher. When we look at the other component of a housing crisis is the supply factor. There is a lack of supply, which can easily be quantified by the fact that, with most recent figures from the Canada and Mortgage Housing Corporation, that the Town of Greater Napanee in October of 2019 had a vacancy rate of 0.4%. That is the lowest municipality with a population of over 10,000. We will receive the October 2020 figures in January, but just purely looking at that number, there is a clear lack of supply. There is also a lack of growth in supply, especially on the affordable side, which is adding stress to the existing supply and increasing those costs. And that is the last piece, to that high-level housing crisis, is the increased costs that we are seeing. Just to give you some more figures, is that in 2016, Statistics Canada reported that 52% of tenant households in Greater Napanee are spending more than 30% of their income on shelter costs, deeming their living arrangement as unaffordable. So, back to the housing continuum, and as we see people move further along in the housing continuum, it does open up availability for other individuals to change their position. But what we are seeing, and what we will continue to see, is the divide between the two ends of the continuum get bigger and bigger, which is impacting the housing crisis. And as we see less movement within these housing types, there is increased pressures on the other end of the continuum, which ultimately are the most expensive for our communities. So, we at PELIS and within the county recognize this and are working out ways to address this issue. One of the ways we are doing so is through our Housing Revitalization Plan. A Housing Revitalization Plan was conducted in 2019 and set a 20-year plan in how we can revitalize our current portfolio. It classified the 16 properties that we do have into four different categories, that being retain, redevelop, revitalize, or dispose of. So, this really takes an approach at looking at what we have available to us and ways that we can enhance. We are currently in the process of implementing the Housing Revitalization Plan, and we are disposing of one of our properties with the intent of using those proceeds to develop further housing stock in our area. But the Housing Revitalization Plan isn't the only way that we can move forward. It's a, it's a piece of the puzzle. Some of the other ways that we will move forward is through using data, data to think strategically and to make evidence-based decisions. We also are looking at modernization, looking at modernizing what housing can look like, not only through the Housing Revitalization Plan, but also while we consider other housing options. It is important for us to be innovative and forward-thinking when it comes to housing. When we look at the federal and provincial government, they've made it clear that they are prioritizing modular housing and more forward-thinking and innovative thoughts, and this is something we do need to consider locally. We also need to look at modernizing housing by looking at opportunities to have more mixed use in terms of incorporating rent gear-to-income with market rents, affordable housing, which is offered at 80% of the market rent, while even considering opportunities to have something like ground floor commercial, really being forward-thinking. We're also preparing for the future. We understand that COVID is going to have impacts on our local economies, and we need to be prepared locally, especially if the trend that we are seeing continues of households leaving more urban areas, highly dense urban areas to our communities, that will increase pressures within the housing sector. We need to be prepared locally for future funding opportunities. The recent funding opportunity that came through the federal government, the Rapid Housing Initiative, required vacancy after 12 months of signing a funding agreement. So, this is a clear example of how these funding opportunities are gonna be very rapid and quick-moving, so we need to be prepared locally. And this will allow us to be prepared for future opportunities. And lastly, is the key piece of partnerships. We do need to partner with our federal and provincial government. We want to continue working with private stakeholders to find solutions, but we also recognize the importance of working with our member municipalities. We often hear that housing is a county or an upper-tier issue. Housing isn't a county or upper-tier-only issue. It's a county service, but it is an issue that is impacting all levels of government and all of our communities, so we really need to find ways that we can partner together and collaborate to find workable solutions. So, I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you here in a very quick period of time, but this is just scratching the surface in terms of housing services and what we are seeing. I understand there's a staff report in front of you this evening, and from a housing perspective, it's encouraging to see innovative and long-term housing solutions being looked at. Housing does need to continue being a priority on all of our agendas, and I really do appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak to council. We at PELIS and at the county are looking forward to continuing the conversation with all of our partners, and on that note, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Connor, and I've got to say, in my, in my 10 years on council, and a term and a half on county council, this is the first presentation of this type, and take this with the utmost respect to the, your predecessors. It shows us just how important that this housing is, Connor, and yes, it is a lot of information, but it's a good exchange for information. And with that, council, questions for Connor? Councilor McCormack?
Thank you, worship. Connor, you made a comment about the latter part of 2019, the availability of housing was below 0.4%, and how did you take into consideration the workers that were at the TransCanada plant at the time that I think were using up a lot of the availability? So, was that?
So, that figure itself would come directly from the Canada and Mortgage Housing Corporation, without providing that context. They would look at it as a quantitative figure. That is important, and that's one of the pieces that I had up there is using data that is available. When we look at data that is available to us, in many instances, it's limited, and it doesn't provide that local context, so we have to consider things like that, because that is a very, very valid point in terms of when that data, that data would have been captured. So, absolutely, that's a very good point.
Well, I think it's important, because I'm sure our CAO has a number in his head, but we were looking at two, three times the amount of workers at the plant at one point than what we had anticipated, and when I drive around Greater Napanee now, I don't see vehicles parked in front of every doorway at the motels, so I'm just wondering if these, if this number is just a bit stretched. I support what you're saying. I'm just concerned that the data is, could be quite off with regards to our own situation here.
And through you, Mayor, what, I would have to do some more background information digging in terms of the CMHC and how they report data, but I imagine it is in the, more so through tenant and long-term tenancies, not necessarily the short-term tenancies, so that could be a context that would be, need to be considered, because it's something like the hotels wouldn't be captured in that, and where the workers were staying, that would all be, would have to be considered on our end.
All right, thank you.
And maybe I'll speak to that just, just a little bit, Connor, being a landlord, is we do get calls each and every year, same time, and I think it's January, if I'm not mistaken, it seems to me that we'll get called about each and every one of our units, one, two-bedroom, any vacancies, how long, what the rents are. And then, I would think, Councilor McCormack, that they might take into consideration what is being, going on here, but that's a good question for us to ask for CMHC, and our CAO wants to jump in here, so I had never thought about how much that might skew some numbers. Nevertheless, we've certainly got a housing shortage. Mr. Calery.
Through the mayor, I would, I'd just add, for background, that TransCanada, when they first came in and developed a community commitment agreement, which included a number of things, there was a number of aspects to that agreement. One of the things they did look at and identify in their initial report was impact on, temporary impacts on housing. So, that data is readily available through a So that data is readily available through a report that TransCanada had done research on and provided in advance. So it would be interesting to compare and contrast those numbers, but they are available to share both locally and at the county level, because they did do a lot of research on that at that point in time. And certainly, prior to TransCanada developing, this issue with housing and the shortage of housing was identified by previous generations of the CDAC Committee of Council, and so it has been a standing committee, which then was rolled into our strategic plans. So certainly, the point is very valid that there was an impact from TransCanada, that some of the concerns predate even their development, but the data from TransCanada was well-captured by their firm that was presented as part of their community commitments to us, and so that could be taken into account very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can just add one last point on that too, is that, I should have thought about this right away, is that the data is reported yearly, and when we look at that figure, it is very consistent that it floats around that .4% to .7%. So it's not as if we saw a blip in one year compared to others. It has been consistently below what you see on a federal and provincial average.
Okay.
Yeah, Council Richardson?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, Worship. With, I mean, being a long-term time resident of the community, the amount of growth that I'm seeing within the community right now is staggering. Does the amount of growth that's happening now with the amount of subdivisions that we have, the amount of different styles of housing that we have, does that affect what you do? Or do you see that as a help or as a hindrance to what you're stating to us tonight?
So through you, Madam Mayor, the growth can be a hindrance, but also an opportunity. As we see adds to the private market, that's where it goes back to that separation of that housing continuum in that market ownership or market rental may become more unachievable for mid-to-low-income households. So then that increases the pressures on social housing and rent geared-to-income housing. However, with the growth, there does become an opportunity to focus on affordable housing options and incorporating ways to increase the number of rentals, so there isn't that lower vacancy rate which can drive up costs in the private market.
Okay, yeah, thank you. It just, it was a number of weeks ago, I guess, that we had representatives of Selkirk here that explained to us that they've got both high, low, and medium-density housing or accommodations within all these new subdivisions. And I may be mistaken, but I do believe that it is part of the provincial plan, is it not, that any of these new subdivisions have a range or a variety of density of housing?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I believe it's been discussed quite frequently. However, I don't believe anything is in place to ensure that the affordability side is captured.
And if I may just go in there too, Council Richardson, and just because there's a density and a supply, doesn't make it always affordable. I know how much we're attracting other people to our area, which I'm sure the real estate agents would say that's what's keeping the price up, but I understand what you're saying too. Are we going to get too much of a supply? Don't I wish?
Well, I'm not so certain we're going to get too much of a supply. It's that old adage, can you have too much of anything really, you know? But I guess what I'm suggesting is that it may not be as dire as it appears right now. I mean, as I said, growing up, there just, there never has been an abundance of rental properties within the community. I know that for a fact. But we seem to be building some buildings that will help us. I know, like I say, we've got the start of the building up on, and I thought they're rental buildings, but I think they're condos up on the rock cut there, as well as what's happening with Clavers, what they're doing up there as well. So, and with the new build in Selkirk, we seem to be moving in the right direction, but I don't think we'll ever have too many.
No, I don't disagree. They're all meeting a need, but unfortunately, they're not all meeting a need, and I'm going to get to you, Council Penau. I just wish that in every single subdivision or development that we see here, or apartments or something, that we could convince, and I know that this is sort of my interest, because I've been involved in the affordable housing for so long, I wish that each and every one of them would apply for funding that would give us affordable housing. Affordable housing being, and Connor, jump in and correct me anytime here, which is 20% below the going rate guaranteed for up to a 20-year span in a building. Am I pretty close there?
That is correct, yeah. It's offered at 80% of the average market rent that's set by CMHC.
And so there's funding available for that, and that would really, if each and every development would do this. I'm going to try not to take over this conversation. Council Penau.
Thank you, Worship. I have this piece of paper here. I was going to save it for the next presentation, but we're kind of talking about it now. So for the last year, I've been proud to say that I was the president of the Kingston Area Real Estate Association. This month, I've now passed on to be past president. But as the last report that I put out in for November, so the Kingston Area Real Estate Association encompasses from Napanee to Ganakwe and north. Okay, so when I talk about, when we hear the word Kingston, don't think of it as just being Kingston, think of it as the whole area. The average price of homes sold in November of 2020 was a record $512,832. And that was a rise of 18.6% in price over November of 2019. However, with that being said, the year-to-date average price was $461,383, which would have been from January 2000 until November, so for the first 11 months, it was up 17.1%. So we're talking about affordable housing. I know we're talking about the rental area as well, but also when we're talking about the subdivisions, they are going to be up for sale, majority of the homes. With these numbers that we had in November was another breaking month. We had many months this year, even with the pandemic, that we broke records. If no inventory came on the market right now and the sales remained the same, we would only have 1.2 months of inventory out there. And that is down from 2.9% of November in 2019, and on an average, it was down 5.2 months for this time throughout the last five years. So there is a huge demand, and I could read you a paragraph here, but it's, there's demand, and the demand is feeding the pricing, which is making homes not attainable anymore. We're talking about affordable housing. That's a little bit different than attaining a house. And like I said, I was going to save this for our next one coming up, but I thought it was important to get those numbers out there now, is that there is a high demand for housing, and once they're on, the prices are going up, way up, and it's not affordable anymore. So that's all I wanted to really say about that until we get on to the next one. Thank you.
Any further questions? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reach out with regards to what you were saying about how apartment buildings could be mandated to have affordable housing units within them, and I don't know whether that's in our power to put into the bylaws or not, but that's something for a different discussion. The one thing that I wanted to address to you was that a couple of years ago, I listened to a presentation of government funding that was available to independent builders who wanted to build units that contained a portion of affordable housing. And one of the discussions at that information session, and there was about 20 to 25 people there, many of whom either were landlords or looking to have rental units available, was what was considered to be market rent. And so this was two years ago, and the government had said for our area, market rent for an apartment was $800. And everybody, every single person in that room had heart failure, because at that point in time, you could not rent a decent apartment in Napanee for $800. So I'm wondering if moving forward, one of the things that is put onto your landscape when you look at your continuum of how to move people from emergency shelters to traditional and social housing into affordable rental housing, is to work with government to have a truer number related to rental housing, because you can't take people from subsidized housing to their own housing if there is a disconnect of 30% in the price of what a rental unit costs. It's just a suggestion, and I don't know if it's on your radar, or if there's some way to put that on the radar. It's part of the discussion.
Through you, Mayor, absolutely. And it is something that we recognize with the data that we do receive through the CMHC. They do give us average market rent, and we have identified that is way below of what we are seeing. So we have submitted business cases to CMHC and the province, which has been granted to give us alternate average market rents, which is, so for a one-bedroom, that is $987; two-bedroom unit, $1,187; and a three-bedroom unit, $1,250. However, we still believe that there is work to do to update those figures even more so. But yes, we absolutely recognize what you're saying.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I remember being at that meeting, and there was quite a jaw drop when they talked about it. Any further questions? Because I would like to ask Connor, just for a few more stats. When CMHC sends out their requests, throws them out to get all their interest in it, are they only speaking to landlords that actually have financing that is part of CMHC? Or are they throwing it out to everyone, every landlord? And if so, how do they get that sort of information?
I don't have that answer in terms of the methodology that CMHC uses. What I can say is that when they do report figures, they do associate a criteria in how confident we can be in the numbers that are providing, and it is a grading scale from A to E. So when we look at figures, one of the tables we look at is social and affordable housing figures, and the criteria associated with that is an E, which is don't be confident, zero confidence. So we take in to consideration the confidence levels that we should have in looking at those data figures. But in terms of the methodology, CMHC captures many different elements that, they have different practices for each one of those figures.
Just might be a good thing to know, and as I'm saying that, I think that they're capturing it all over, not just with that. So how old, what would be the average age of, and let's just stick to Greater Napanee in this, what would be our average age of some of our units for the geared-to-income right now?
The buildings are quite dated, and in, when we look at the building conditions assessment, our property staff would be able to provide some figures on that. I don't have the age of the buildings. That would be more appropriate, come from our properties side of things, but I can tell you that there is clear need to put money and investments into the buildings that we currently do have. And those were things that were considered in the Housing Revitalization Plan while considering if it should be a redeveloped property, or retained property, or a revitalized property, for example.
And when we go to these, and this will be my last question, I promise, when we go to these information sessions that the National Housing Strategy and CMHC are putting on, what do you find are being the two largest roadblocks, three largest roadblocks to people making application for funding?
Timelines associated with it. When we look at, the federal government did recently announce a billion-dollar investment in affordable housing, but the timelines associated with it and the criteria associated with it, this funding had to be dedicated to modular housing if it was going to be new builds. So that is a roadblock that we see is the timelines and the criteria set. The being prepared is another, with those timelines, we need to be prepared, and if we aren't, that's a reason why we wouldn't. And the NIMBYism is always a thing to consider in terms of applications and looking at affordable housing opportunities. So I don't know if, I'd say those are the three top, but those are three that come to mind as we...
Yeah, and add to that, the availability of the property and the proper zoning for that. They'll be big roadblocks as well. Any further comments or questions for Connor? Connor, and thank you very much for the emergency shelter information and so on. And I know we're going to move on to 11.2, which is going to be the discussion with our staff report, with Mr. Zatterberg. Thank you for bringing it forward to us. It's complicated. I'm sure you're going to hear from us again, probably with a whole lot more questions. It's something that I don't think that there's a definite definition that we all think of as being common. So I thank you, Connor, for all the work you're putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So I'll get a motion to receive Connor's, Connor's report. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Council Richardson, all in favor of that motion. Great, thank you. Mr. Zatterberg. So we're going, for those that are watching at home, we're going to 11.2. We had moved that to follow.
11.1.
11.1, sorry. Yeah, okay, page 65 on the agenda, sorry.
So, Worship, there's been a good discussion so far on this topic, so I don't have to expand on it too much, I don't think. I would like to add that part of the reason why I invited Connor to speak here tonight was from a conversation I had with a member of county staff earlier in the year. I asked him what was the biggest hurdle they're facing from a housing point of view, and they said the availability of land was their biggest hurdle. So land inventory is an issue, and that was also a discussion as we were looking at the selling of the Selkirk, now the Selkirk properties, was the availability of land was driving the demand for that property as well. Connor just mentioned that time is an issue. So part of what I'm bringing forward is getting them time to develop a plan, and that hopefully in that timeframe, we don't run out of land that they can use for a long-term, 10, 20-year strategy going forward. And also too, as far as the innovation side or the modular side, the town this year starts the review of the official plan, and this is an opportunity this year to address some of the issues that the private developers are facing when they're trying to access the funding. And again, while they're going through that process, we want to make sure that there's land available for them to put those innovations in place. That's just what I wanted to add in addition to what's already in the report. I'm glad to, or I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Zatterberg based on his report? Council Richardson, you've almost got your hand up there.
Just bear with me.
I can bear with you, sure.
Yeah. I don't disagree with what we've heard tonight. I guess where I will disagree at this point, just bear with me here. The part that I disagree with is the removing of the East Ward Park lots or the old Sutter subdivision from the town surplus list. Unfortunately, we're within sight of the finish line of a bit of a review over how we deal with surplus lands, and we're within sight of the finish line of a report from Mr. Zatterberg with respect to a pilot project, which I personally think was very successful. I suspect that these two reviews, or these two reports will be coming to us very soon in the near future, probably if not the first meeting in January, probably the second. I guess it would, in my world, I would like to wait and see the results of those reviews and reports before jumping forward and removing properties from our surplus. And I have faith in Mr. Zatterberg, but I would also like to see if there are any other surplus properties that we have that might fit the bill with respect to what we are suggesting here tonight. I just didn't want to cherry pick and take a property and put it aside for something down the road if there are other options, depending on how the study is. how the study is, depending on what the needs are, we may find that this piece of property fills that needs. We may find that this piece of property doesn't fill those needs. But, until we know that, I kind of like to wait before we remove it from the surplus list, I guess, is my opinion anyway. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McCormack?
Thank you, Worship. This is not criticism, it's just a comment. I find myself, again, picking up an agenda on Monday afternoon and then finding myself here tonight to have to decide on something that, to me, is fairly involved. And so, I'd be more than happy to support that staff continue looking into this, but I'm not prepared to support removing the property from the list. As Counselor Richardson just pointed out, this would be, I'd be happier to wait for the report from KPMG and go through the process that we agreed to do. Notwithstanding what you're doing is important, I just, again, find it difficult with not enough information to circumvent what's already in the process. That's my comment.
Okay. Counselor Norrie?
Without copying everything, Friday when I was reading this, that was a red flag. Until, as much as we need housing, and I'll support whatever I can, we have an investigation and, as Counselor Richardson, in my world, you don't make a decision until the investigation's done. So, I'd rather put it on hold until we hear back from them, and talking to them and their phoning us, it sounds like they'll be getting back to us in January from the investigation, but that's just my opinion.
Anything further? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Echo, echo, echo. And I'm sure that we're, we, and when I say we, I mean council and senior staff, as we're looking at this and as county and town are talking about it, that we're all willing to be open-minded and consider innovative thinking. And from that standpoint, looking at the property, yeah, that was probably the right property to pick if you had to pick one from what we have in surplus. But, you know, I think we just need to be a little bit patient, but the dialogue can continue. And I think from that standpoint, you know, whether it's Brant's team, or Connor's team, or whoever, know that we're, you know, not that far away from the opportunities that may be in front of us. But, the discussion can keep going and we can keep looking and thinking, be ready when we are ready, once these two reports have come out.
Anything further from anyone? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question with regards to taking, looking at this property and removing it from the surplus list. What would be the process if the county is looking to develop the subdivision similar to what's explained in, for lack of a better term, tiny homes, affordable housing? What would the process be for the town to work with the county in developing that? And let's start with that.
As with any other development, they'd have to work through Development Services?
Yes.
To make sure the zoning is appropriate?
Yes.
So, any changes to zoning would have to go through Michael's department as well.
Okay. So, are we looking at them purchasing the property, or are they looking for us to donate the property?
I have not had that discussion.
Okay. So, those are two very different discussions.
Yes.
And I agree with what everyone else has said this evening, that we should wait for the report to come back. Having said that, I don't see where it would be a detriment to the project to consider what the requirements would be. And as we look at our housing initiative and our changes in bylaws and zoning, how we can fit this sort of concept into what we have to offer. Why can that not go on regardless of what property they're looking at? I don't see why that discussion needs to be related to one specific property.
Well, it would go to the availability of land. So, if that's a stumbling block for the county to develop their strategy, it's just having a land available to them so they can make whatever decisions they need to make going forward, which at this point, we have no idea what those are. We just want to give them the opportunity.
But, when we look at moving forward, if we look at housing development, and we look at the size of houses and the size of lots, and how many houses can go within a subdivision, those are discussions that our building and planning department can have irregardless of whether this property is involved. And if our planning department has those discussions and moves those concepts forward, then regardless whether it's this piece of property or a different piece of property, we are closer to achieving those goals.
Yes. Also, too, Your Worship, just to draw the council's attention that even though the date of tonight's meeting is the fifteenth, I was not asking for a decision until January twelfth. So, it wasn't for a decision tonight. It was just basically for information and allow us to continue. Obviously, there's not going to be a lot of discussion between now and that date because of Christmas holidays, but I wanted to make sure that I had permission from council to at least have a discussion with the county about what their needs are.
Counselor for now.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this is a fantastic initiative. It's kind of one of those things as we're talking, is it's the chicken and the egg thing. I agree, like if the county's going to be working on a strategic home plan, that they'll need to know what kind of an area that they'd be working in. And so, I think that the land is a perfect spot for what they may be looking at doing. I definitely would be in favor for trying to ask the county to continue working as if this was the piece of property and come back and give us a nice plan of what their proposal would be. As, you know, sixteen acres would definitely look after their needs for the next twenty years or so, I hope, anyway. But, I just think that it's a great initiative and thinking outside of the boxes on what a home needs to be. My thoughts of what I need for a home is different than everybody else sitting here in this room and come in with different types of models and strategic strategies would be fantastic. So, I'd definitely be in favor of keeping the talks going in regards to this project. Thank you.
Go ahead, and then it's me.
It's going to be quick. Thank you, Worship. I'm just going to suggest maybe our decision date of January twelfth, we should push it back then, maybe a month to ensure that we get the reports that we are going to require prior to that. Or, I think probably the first meeting in February would suffice, I'm guessing.
I think when we all opened our agendas, no, I'm going to back up a little bit. Was I aware that the county was going to be looking to expand housing in this area? Of course I am. I'm on county council, and I happen to sit on that as well. Was I aware that they had looked at, thank you, Mr. Zatterberg, I won't ask any questions, thank you. Was I aware that this was a piece of property that they were looking at? A little bit, but not really. Really, when they said where it was, I was trying to figure out just what it is. I agree with everybody. I don't want it to come off the surplus list tonight. I don't think that that's something that with us, with the KPMG consulting and report that's coming back to us, I don't think we're in a position to take it off. But, I do think that we may be in a position, whether it is at whatever this is called, it's not Selkirk, Sutter subdivision, whether it's in different areas that are spread throughout. Today, I took the time to go back and look at each and every of our campaigns, and we all said that affordable housing and attainable housing and social housing was part of what we thought had to move forward. This is an opportunity, and it's not just Greater Napanee that's going to be asked to do this. It's going to be Loyalist, it's going to be Stone Mills, it's going to be everything. But, I do think that we need to be able, in my humble opinion, to instruct staff to work with the county. This is an opportunity that has been a long time coming to say, what can we move forward? If it's at this property, so be it. But, it won't be without our approval, and it won't be probably maybe even giving away the land. It could be private investment. It could be that we're going to attract people to invest in this. So, it's not like we're just giving away the farm, which I'm sure a lot of people out in the land today think that's what it is. It's not. It's to move forward with a plan. If we miss some opportunities for funding, then that's the way that it's going to be. But, I think we have to start somewhere. We just can't keep saying, not a responsibility, not, and I know that that's not what anybody is saying here. But, what I would like to see is that we go with the recommendation that we received for information, the attainable project regarding the town-owned East Ward Park lots, but that we further support town staff to initiate work with the county as they develop an attainable housing strategy. Forget the removing. Take out removing it from East Ward. Nothing from the town surplus. But, they look at where we might be able to develop and help them with something. And I just think that that, other than that, we just stop the process. Been a lot of work going into it, and it's something that's very important. We have the time, we have the staff, we have the interest, and hopefully, it can all be done if other levels of government above county and town can get their stuff together and make these funding applications much easier, whether it's another level of government that gets the funding, or hopefully, that we can attract private. But, that's, that would be what I would want to see. But, I agree with each and every one of you. I don't want to remove anything from the surplus list. I don't want to do anything to do with deals. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
I'll let Mr. Calery speak if he's got something.
We're finally going to give him a chance, okay?
I just wanted to give counsel a little bit of background and a bit of context to this report because Mr. Zatterberg wasn't too far out on a limb when he did this, and I just wanted to make sure counsel understood the background on this. Is, a short time, a short while ago, the CAOs of the county had a conversation on a number of, as we normally do have our regular meetings. And one of the things that the CIO of the county, Brenda Orchard, wanted to do was do a presentation, very similar to what you saw tonight, was done to the area's CAOs, because they were reaching out wanting to start having some discussions on partnerships. Because the county, although having the plan and having some of the responsibility in this, one thing that they don't have a lot of control over is the land in all of the areas within the counties. They seem to fall into more the municipal jurisdiction, the lower-tier jurisdiction. So, wanted to talk about some partnerships. And it was a very simple conversation that was sort of passed on then to our, through to Mr. Zatterberg and asked Mr. Zatterberg to reach out and find out what the issues were and what needed to be addressed from our end, just to create a conversation. And that's where Mr. Zatterberg was going this evening, was to just get a conversation going. Part of the rationale and the timing, and the reason he wanted this report to come in early before Christmas, so counsel had it to think about over the end of this year, and over through the holidays. And really, he was, I think, in the date he picked, the twelfth coincides with the date the KPMG report was coming back. So, it wasn't meant to predetermine the KPMG report. It was really meant to coincide with the KPMG reports. You had all of that information before you. So, I just thought that was an important piece of background. The other two things I think that are really important is that if counsel, with counsel having this background in this discussion, is that once the KPMG report comes back and whatever counsel decides to do with surplus property sales in the future, because part of that report, as I understand it, was to really develop what our policies are going to be moving forward as the community. We are all aware, I think, that there's a shortage of land in Eastern Ontario, as far as what's developable and what's not developable. And keeping in mind, this piece of property has had, through the tax sale process, the subdivision removed. So, it's now just a chunk of land. It's not a, there's no plan of subdivision, there's nothing else. It's a green field development to whoever moves it forward. And so, the consideration, I think, is all his staff were trying to do by putting it on the table for counsel, was that if counsel develops a policy fairly quickly after the release of the KPMG report, there could be many people who explore options. So, no matter what option you decide to use to sell land in the future, there may be some large interest in that that counsel will want to be aware of. What we didn't want to do is have counsel not hear the story from the county as to what they're looking for. So, whenever a proposal comes forward, you had that in the back of your mind just for consideration prior to any sales of any surplus lands in the future. So, that's sort of a bit of the background, because we all have to, kind of, trying to make sure counsel has as many pieces of a puzzle as they can get around the same time. Because in January, this counsel has sort of given direction to staff that we wanted to get, we want to review our strategic objectives, of which this was, has been listed as one of our strategic objectives, housing. So, all of those pieces, as you move through January, are going to be pieces of background that you're all going to want to fit together to tell staff or give staff direction, what are the priorities and how do we want you to apply your resources going into the future. So, as much as it kind of looked a little bit like Mr. Zatterberg was out on a limb probably when you opened the agenda, I wanted, I thought it was very important for you to have the background as far as the direction he'd been given, the requests we've had from the county, and how some of those pieces will fit together moving into the future. So, that's a little bit. The other thing is, when Mr. Zatterberg mentioned about the official plan being looked at, it's time to start refreshing our official plan, is we must keep in mind that we have to work in lockstep with the county. The county is now required by the province to have their own official plan, but the county's official plan will supersede ours. So, if there's a change in the county official plan on a housing policy, we're going to need to conform. So, we want to make sure as we move through, we're moving through in partnership between the municipality and the county, so that we're not tripping over each other or surprised by the other one's decisions when it comes to housing moving forward in those policies. So, the earlier we begin those discussions, certainly the CAOs reached out, they were looking for partnerships. We've dressed our staff to start addressing what the issues are, so none of our elected officials at either the upper or lower tier will be surprised as decisions move forward through the rest of your term. So, I just, sorry, Madam Mayor, I just felt it was important background for you to have.
No, no, and I don't think any of us were trying to throw darts at Brant for this. I think it's certainly something that, and what would we do without something that was a surprise on the agenda. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, Worship. As you stated, and as others stated around the table, this definitely is a priority. And with that in mind, I want to encourage senior staff to continue conceptualizing. And I think we need to sort of make a commitment to the county at some level that we are willing to work collaboratively as a willing partner. So, if we can just simply remove the removing from this staff recommendation, I'd be prepared to make that motion that, you know, we continue discussions, we continue to receive updates, regular updates on this, and that we continue to support the county in their visioning, whether it's this property, another property, or property from, that's not in our town holdings, that we can support it in concept. I definitely want to see town involvement in the county's development of an official plan. And I hope that, I hope that we communicate that clearly at county. But anyways, so, I would make the motion if we can just appropriately remove the removing of any property from the surplus list, I would move the remainder.
Counselor McCormack will second that. Any further comments or questions? Susan, you have what you need. And again, Mr. Zatterberg, we weren't throwing darts. It's something that we need to look at, and obviously, we all feel exactly the same. It just, we want to do it thinking of what the report's coming forward, and it may not even be that property. We may be able to pinpoint lots of other places it'll go, or things that we can handle differently by rezoning instead of having everything in the same place. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. And while I call this a community of tiny houses, that was just based on the example that was given from Wellington. Whether they be tiny houses, or whether you call it a golf course community, or whether you call it seniors' homes that are built on cement bases instead of homes with basements, I think it is important for our community to develop housing neighborhoods that encompass a variety of selections for people. One of the really great things I loved about Napanee when we moved here fifteen years ago was that we don't have a high-end part of town and a low-end part of town, and a part of town that is definitely indicated as being lower-income. We have a mix throughout the community, and I think we want to make sure that any development that comes forward contains a mix of housing.
Yep, so stay with diversity. With that, if there's nothing further, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Need a council resolution to accept additional deputations with no notice if required. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor Richardson. All in favor of that motion. All in favor of that motion, motion is carried. No waiting, does anybody in the background? No, no one, okay, thank you. Uh, subpoint, I'm going to go to the adoption of the amendments then. Uh, in section seven, I would take, uh, a motion to accept for the regular session of council November 24th, 2020, and include with that special session of council, uh, December the 8th, which was our budgets. Moved by Counsel McCormack, seconded by Counsel Johnson. Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Eight point one, correspondence for information. You have a recommendation that the correspondence for information items dated December the 15th be received. Moved by Counsel Penal, seconded by Counsel Richardson. Anything to be separated or spoken to? Counsel Richardson?
I, I was going to, but we've got a, a fairly long evening left. And just with respect to the Cataract Way, I, I had conversations with the Cataract Conservation today with respect to their report. Um, that report, um, and I think we spoke about it when Quinney Conservation, um, uh, did their, we sent the letter for Quinney Conservation. Um, that ship, to a certain extent, has already sailed at this point. It's already been, um, made its way through the majority of the provincial government already, so, um, I think we can just leave it now.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Richardson. Any further comments? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Correspondence for action. Sean Payne, President Martin's Bus Services, concern with Tri-Board Transportation requests for proposals for busing services and effects on small bus companies. You have the information, uh, before you. Um, you have, I also have a recommendation. Are there any questions, um, on this? The report was fairly, uh, Mr. Payne's letter was, was fairly explicit.
I have a question. So the recommendation just says provide any further direction. How can we support that? I mean, uh, the idea that it, you get only big companies bidding, and I forget exactly all the wording on it, but, um, it undercuts the idea of all these small bus, uh, owners and operators and going to basically a monopoly of school busing, which actually would be a huge detriment to this community. I think we're, you know, under COVID, we're barely able to keep up now, but I think it would actually, uh, you'd see gaps and failures in the system, uh, in the short term anyways. What, what are our avenues to support this other than letters to appropriate ministers or premier?
Well, I know this came up two years ago, if I'm not mistaken, and I hate to, to turn to you, Mr. Zadaberg, but be, because you were with the Board of Education, which I know doesn't handle the transportation, but any advice that you can handle here, or that you can help us with here. Um, I, I know that there had been, um, a bit of an uproar, and it seemed to have settled things down until it's come up again, and I think it's coming up again fairly quickly. So letters of support, uh, I suppose to try, I, I don't even know, you're right, I don't know who sent it to. Is it Minister of Education? Who, who's, who's putting out the procurement?
Tri-Board.
Tri-Board is. So I guess then it's Tri-Board that we'd, that we would have to go after with our, our concerns that, you know, all of a sudden, they're taking, certainly, Mr. Zadaberg, thank you.
An, an option too would be to send, uh, letters to the Directors of Education for each of the five boards that use Tri-Board for their services. They're, they collectively, they, they own Tri-Board Transportation.
Okay. So we have the direction that it goes, now we need the verbiage.
Well, I, I also note that, uh, Central Frontenac's motion here covered a lot of that. Um, I guess I'd forgotten to reread that, but, um, if we can follow on what Central Frontenac did and, and maybe add in letters to those five directors in support.
So if we were to do it, such as Township of Central Frontenac has done, that we would receive the correspondence from Sean, um, whereas Tri-Board Transportation Services are intending to issue an RFP for bus services later in November. But I think, has, have they already gone out? The RFPs, I don't, I'm not sure that they have. Okay, at some point, I guess we would be able to say, so this had better go off to them quickly. Whereas the Tri-Board Bus Operators Association has sent a letter to Gordon Taylor of Tri-Board Transportation Services expressing their concerns with the board's upcoming RFP process, which would force small and medium-sized local companies out of business. And whereas, the local bus, uh, operators employ dedicated and loyal drivers who live within our communities, who are familiar with our unique rural area, and take great pride in the safety of the students even during the winter months when we experience inclement weather. And whereas Greater Napanee is a rural, um, is a rural urban municipality who prides themselves in the number of small family-run businesses which are essential to, for our residents, including our bus operators, who take great care in transporta- transporting the young people to our schools, and therefore be it resolved, uh, which would carry on, uh, from there. Not to proceed, uh, but we work together to get a solution to retain, uh, local operators. And further, that a copy of this resolution, resolution go to Gore Taylor of Tri-Board, the Directors of Education for Limestone Board, Algonquin, uh, Lake Shore, and Lake Shore Catholic School Board, Hastings and Prince Edward District School Board, along with the trustees and the chairs of the board that serve Greater Napanee. Uh, we're going to skip over the next two. And that, and it would also go to Derek Sloan, our MP, as lo- as well as Daryl Cramp, our MPP, Premier Doug Ford, Minister of Education Stephen Leckie, and other, um, Lennox and Addington municipalities, um, including the County of Lennox and Addington.
Well done.
With that, it's easy ones, right, running. I, I, I just, I think it's important. I mean, you know, you, you get somebody that's, I, I don't know how they would attract people to begin with, why somebody would want to come and set up a business like that when there's, we're so well-established with the, the certain ones that know the kids' names. I, I know that it's tough and there has to be competition. Uh, I don't think it's, I don't think it's pricing. Uh, I, I also think that these, um, these companies don't just supply school transportation. They're also, uh, very much in transportation for a lot of other uses in our area. And if we lose them, our transportation, um, is bad enough as it is without having to, to lose all those, those companies. And, and for many people too, it's a, it's a second, a second income. So, um, there's your, somebody has to move it and second it, I just read it. Deputy Mayor Kaiser? Counselor Penal? Comments or questions? I kind of took that over. Counselor, Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, very well said. I think it's also important to note that the letter from Sean Payne, the President of Martin's Bus Service, said we had hoped to negotiate the contract or extend our current one, which expires in June of 2021. They're not looking for, um, a free ride or a reason to extend a contract without negotiation. They're just looking for an opportunity to negotiate.
That's right.
And I think we need to support that.
Good, well put. Any further comments or questions? You know, it's local business that we're supporting here. If not, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Just have to get back, okay, so eight point. Eight point two, point two, Waste Management, Environmental Compliance Approval, Application, Overall Revision of the ECA A37120, sorry, yeah, three, Waste Management of Canada Corporation, Richmond Landfill. You have a recommendation before you. Does anyone want to speak to this, or are there any questions to be directed at staff? If not, you do have a recommendation before you. To receive.
Uh, motion to receive. I'm just, I'm surprised we didn't hear from Mr. Monroe or anybody else.
I have to.
Uh, and, um, I mean, we can receive it as it is. Uh, obviously, it'd be very concerning, the first line, or the second sentence where it says requesting the removal of conditions. I'm really surprised we hadn't heard from anybody. But it, I, I mean, even if we receive it now, if somebody had concerns that came forward at a future time, we could still respond to it at that time, but, uh, obviously, I think that we maybe could or should respond that that's concerning.
So if we were to put it off till our January 12th meeting, is there, is there, uh, there's no deadline for us to, to receive on this? And take the time to, to consult with, uh, with, with Mr. Monroe? I, I am very surprised that we wouldn't have heard from him, and, and would this information, I don't know who have got here that can help us. Um, I, I'm not sure who would, um, whether it would be sent to the, the CCLC or, I'm not sure, just the concerned citizens, would it have been sent to them? This came to me personally, so. Although it's a two, to who it may concern. Counsel, would you like to set this aside until the next meeting so that we have more information on it? Counselor Penal?
Thank you, Worship. I'm just reading through this, and this is written comments must, uh, if you have any questions or concerns or objections to the proposal, you must send written comments to, and then written comments must be received by the MECP within 45 days of the notice. Is, is that going to hurt us at all?
Well, that makes it the middle of January.
Pardon?
Makes it the middle of January, it's dated November 30th.
Counsel's wishes here. I don't like receiving something and approving it that, that we haven't had enough information, nor have we talked to some of the partners. Counselor Penal?
I, I move that we receive it, but, or, sorry, put it off, but as long as we keep in consideration 45 days.
Moved by Counsel Penal? Seconded. So how are we going to bookmark that so that we know to go to the bookmarking right now, aren't you?
I am, but because we're moving it from this meeting to the next, it'll be on the unfinished business column on the agenda.
There you go, okay, perfect. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. So the direction of staff?
I'm just, I'm just commenting that the date of our next meeting is actually the 15th of January, is it not?
12th.
12th. So we'll be at day 43 or something like that, so.
Perfect.
So, so just, just so that we're, we're aware, we, we've taxed staff then to make sure that we get, get the answers as to who it goes to and what the ramifications would be, and more information will come back to us.
That's correct, we'll pass it on to our environmental department.
Good, thank you. Okay. Josh Blanchard, sorry, eight, did we vote on that? Yes. Uh, eight point, eight point two, point three, uh, Josh Blanchard, Lennox and Addington Ridge Runners, Snowmobile Club. And I think that there was a correction, um, Madam Clerk, that we had wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of.
Yes, just in the MOU document, the concession should be concession two, not concession three.
Thank you, and you do have a recommendation that we receive for information, and further that we authorize the mayor and clerk, uh, to execute on behalf of the town a memorandum of understanding, um, prescribed snowmobile trail, land use, permission on town land with Lennox and Addington Ridge Runners, Snowmobile Club. Comments or questions?
I'll, I'll make that motion, uh, as amended.
Okay, as amended? Seconded by Counsel Johnson. Is this a year, is this a yearly thing that we do with them? No, this is something new. I know that I've attended some of their, their things, and they always thank the town for, for, uh, so, so just as long as we know.
Yep, so they're proposing just to update, and the, uh, MOU would be in place until November 30th of 2022, and then updated.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure that was, that was out there. I have a motion. All in favor of the motion? Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Penal? I thought that I'd Counsel Johnson, yeah. All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried, thank you. Unfinished business. Committee reports. Municipal Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, November the 17th, have a recommendation to receive and adopt the minutes as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counsel Johnson. Comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Staff reports, we have already gone through, uh, the 11.1. So now we're into 11.2, CAO OPP Contract of New Rule. Mr. Calery, I'm going to let you speak to this first.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and to members of council. Um, 2020's been a long year for a lot of reasons, but it's been a long year when it comes to discussion of the OPP matters. Um, in January of, and I'll just recap very briefly. In January of 2020, um, discussions, um, I guess heated up to, to say the least, but, um, through a delegation that both you, Madam Mayor, and Counsel Richardson participated in with regard to bringing to the ministries' attention issues around, resolving around not only the cost of policing, but policing within Quinney Detention Center was really kicked off in January of this year. In March of 2020, council considered the issue of the OPP contract and determined that an extension beyond the June date was going to be required, especially at that point in time with meetings. We're somewhat questionable with the start of, uh, the COVID pandemic, and we knew that we were going to need some additional time. Um, every month since then, when we've had a service area update, uh, as a standing issue, this has been on an issue, uh, on a standing item issue for discussion of council and providing information on the questioning that's been continuing to go on uh, throughout the entire 2020. In, in October 13th, there was another formal presentation by the OPP that brought together a number of points where they were trying to put a discussion together. Uh, the report that's here tonight, for all intensive purposes, was presented at the budget meeting for council's information so that they could, uh, develop any further information that was required. And the report that appears before you tonight includes the additional information that was requested from council on further costing information, uh, which I'll speak to in just a minute. Um, tonight, although a, uh, the final report is updated, there was some additional information that came in this afternoon, which has been provided to council on their desk, and I would include as an addition to the report itself, which is an email from Contract Policing. There was a, a number of ongoing conversations with regard to questions that were brought up in and around the budget meeting. And the OPP have recognized the fact that they need to provide some more detailed information to council. And if council was so willing, um, they would set up additional meetings in January and extend the decision date to the end of January to allow for, um, at least one, if not two more meetings, uh, to come forward with some detailed information uh, that they're, that they can prepare. Um, they would like, um, obviously, to make sure that they're, they're providing everything that council wants, and so that, um, they are looking for some idea on some potential questions that still need to be outstanding, or there are questions that are still outstanding and need to be addressed. And I think the Ontario Provincial Police recognizes the fact that the municipality has also requested an additional delegation with the ministries um, in January of this year, and they would, you know, obviously want to have a meeting between uh, senior members of the Ontario Provincial Police and council, and possibly Police Service Board, uh, membership as well, um, to ensure that all questions are being addressed prior to that delegation, and hopefully a follow-up meeting following the delegation to make sure that council's questions have been answered prior to a decision point, um, at the end of January. So that is additional information, and does allow for more time. And certainly, the questions that have been raised by this council are being recognized that further information, um, is likely required from the OPP prior to council finalizing their particular decision. Um, just for some additional information, I did pull out, um, um, council had requested at the budget meeting, uh, some additional information on local costing, and that was in, that was attached to the report off the OPP's webs- website from 2000. But I thought it was, um, you know, particularly interesting when you look at the areas around us and, and very quickly, municipalities like Addington Highlands that are $279 per property, Bancroft is $546, Brighton being third through, 331, Carlton Place at $482, Centre Hastings at $323, Deserano at $532, Loyalist at $348, uh, North Grenville, which is the Kempville area, is $322, Perth at $506, Prince Edward County at $330, $332, Quinney West at $404. West at $404, Stone Mills at $284, and Greater Napanee at $513. We're, we're third on the ones that I pulled out there that were maybe comparables or in the area, but there's quite a bit of jump on that list when you look at the difference between 279 in, in Addington Highlands, up through to even $546 in Bancroft, which are, you know, the, when you take a look at the various geographic issues. But we're certainly, as I think Counselor Richardson had pointed out at the budget meeting, very high at $513, and when you take a look at the averages, the average for 2020 was 300, or 357 was the average property cost when you look at the information posted on their website. There's two issues, though, that I think, that came from the comparisons that weren't necessarily either in the report or directly asked to the OPP, that I think maybe need some follow-up. One of them is on the ratio of base services to calls for service, because obviously, as council's aware, there's a base cost that everybody pays the same, and then there's the calls for service on top of that. When this originally was discussed back in 2016, the base was just under 60% at 58.7, and the calls for service made up 41% of the bills that municipality received. That has now slipped to 54.5 and 45.5. And the reason that's important is the hub municipalities that are going to have additional calls for service are now going to see a greater percentage of that. And I think the question that the counselors may be asking, or council may be asking themselves, or the OPP may provide further information, is, is that base reduction based on savings they've had from what they have in the base costs? Or is that things that have been transferred from the base back into calls for service? And what's making up that, that ratio change? Because that does make a difference to our community in particular. The, the other issue is if you, when I look down is, in 2016, when they brought in the new system, they did, they, they realized the fact that our, you know, municipalities like Greater Napanee were paying up in, upwards in the 500s, the high 500s per property, and there was municipalities at that point in time who were paying, there, there was a municipality, I believe, that was paying less than $1,000 for all of their policing costs. And so what they determined was, is to, to bridge the gap, is they were going to have to put caps on municipalities that were allowed to go down, and municipalities that were allowed to go up. And, and it did make sense at the time. They were phasing it in, and obviously, they didn't expect, I don't think Greater Napanee at any time expected to have all the savings in one year from this, but there was going to be a, have to be a phasing in to make it, make it equitable for, for neighboring municipalities. So their, originally, their increases were capped at the, you know, at $40 per property, and the decreases were capped at 60. So for a number of years, in 16 through 19, we basically supported our neighboring municipalities who were having large increases by reducing our reductions. So where we were supposed to be getting reductions every year in our costs, ours were being capped. So that cap, that cap came off in 2000, so their phase-in was basically complete. So we're no longer capped, so as we're now, again, seeing increases again, those increases aren't capped. But one of the conversation pieces around that is that there could be municipalities that are seeing decreases because of the changes in the base and that, and, and they're not being capped. And so that, that sharing doesn't exist any longer in the system. But in years where I think nobody anticipated, when the five-year cap came off, that we'd be into COVID, where our local rate pairs and everybody's rate pairs are affected by pandemic costs and going into 2021, but there's no necessarily protection between those that might be seeing decreases and those that's seeing decreases to try and still have some equity in, in the system. So there's a couple of points there that are, when you look at the costing, on average, that council may have some continued questions for the OPP at future meetings in January. But I felt it was important just to, you know, it's been a long conversation, there's probably more information, I give, you know, I think that council, or the OPP is recognizing the fact that there's some legitimate questions that council still has, and I, if there's any particular questions on the report, I would just leave it at that in case, and I'm sure council has lots of discussion on this.
Counsel? Go ahead, Counselor Richardson.
Did you wish me to start?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Start somewhere.
Our conversation is going to be a whole lot shorter tonight, because we're not going to make a decision on whether we're going to have to make a, enter into a contract or not a contract. I, I'm encouraged in the fact that the provincial police has moved back the timeline in order to provide us more information. That makes me happy. With what I read, and, and that was happy as of 3:30 this afternoon, what I've read in the report, and I really don't know where to start, but I think what I'll do is, I think we all realize that there's a base amount of money that everybody in the province pays, and then there's an amount that the prob, that each municipality pays calls for service. Obviously, we're not going to tell our people not to call the police because it's going to drive up our taxes, but we do have this thing called the jail, the Quinney Detention Center, that, that's a bit of a burr, and, and we've already tried to address it, we, we've asked for some information, we got a, a letter back from, from the Joint Forces Penitentiary Squad, the deputy director. It ends by saying it is clearly not our mandate of the penitentiary squad as such, we, we will not be taking responsibility to the Quinney Detention Center. But earlier on in the letter, it suggests that in 1992, the mandate was changed. So we know that the mandate can be changed for them to police the, the Quinney Detention Center. It, it identifies very well what the, the penitentiary squad is. It, it identifies the fact that they have six institutions, per se, in the city of Kingston, and they have six institutions, per se, they're not, they've separated them into six institutions, but they're really not, but they're six institutions, we'll use their stats, six in, in the city of Kingston, and six in OPP land, which coincidentally is Loyalist Township, which is a part of our detachment area. The penitentiary squad is made up of six OPP officers and one Kingston City Police Officer. So the city of Kingston is getting six institutions policed by one, one constable and six OPP officers. In the OPP land, we've got six OPP officers that are policing six facilities in the township of Loyalist, but when you look at how much per household Loyalist Township is paying, they're paying $348 per household. So they're policing six federal institutions, and they're $160, $170 per household, less than us, who are policing one provincial institution. I, I, I have a hard time understanding that concept, and I, and I, I know that our policing costs aren't necessarily completely skewed because of the jail, but the jail does make a difference. And it just, it just bothers me in the fact that it almost would appear as though one detachment area, or one detachment, or one municipality within our detachments getting favorable treatment as opposed to another. It, it's just, I'm just looking purely at the numbers. I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense to me, so. But they do say that their mandate, it's not the responsibility to police the Quinney Detention Center.
Do you want to take a breath while Deputy Mayor Kaiser comes in?
Yeah, I, I've, I've got some other stuff, but I'll let him.
No, that's okay. Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Thank you. So when I read through these numbers, what I jumped on was trying to compare apples to apples, and I realized Selwyn is not the same apple as Greater Napanee or Loyalist, but numbers of, of households. If we started looking at the number of households in, in this report, they're almost the same. Loyalist is almost the same. There's a number of others, I can't remember them all. There's six or seven or eight municipalities with seven and a half thousand households. Every other one of them pays around $2.5 million total. Greater Napanee pays $4 million. That is glaring. And whether it comes down to one provincial prisoner or not, there's something horribly amiss, and the calls for service can't account for that alone. There is something really wrong with the formula. When one municipality in the entire province of seven and a half thousand, give or take a couple hundred, is paying more than 50% more than every other similarly sized municipality, I need an explanation on that point. Simply that, if they can stand in front of us and tell us that they can justify a million and a half dollars difference over all other similarly sized municipalities, I'd be damn surprised.
Your turn again.
I'll, and, and it's possible that, when I looked at the numbers, and this is a question, maybe a great good answer, is, is that because we have a contract with the OPP, we're entitled to enhancements, but the enhancements, we have to pay at a cost. So are we paying for any enhancements that would skew the numbers that we're looking at?
So currently, through the mayor, we're, we have no enhancements on our particular contract. There are municipalities that do, but we do not currently have any enhancements on our particular contract. I just wanted to point out for council too, and it kind of makes it worse than what we're actually saying is, it's not even per household, it's per property, so it's commercial properties, it's all properties that aren't exempt from the base number, so it's not just our houses, it's every property we have.
Thank you. I, I mean, I mean, I, I can build on what the deputy mayor said. I went through and counted it. We're tied for 15th out of 292 municipalities for the highest price per household. And, and there's a lot of big municipalities in here, you know, and, and maybe it's just a coincidence as well, but 11 of the 14 that are ahead of us have contracts and three don't. So I know that probably doesn't, per se, equate to whether we should have a contract or not, but it's just coincidental that 11 out of 14 have contracts with the OPP that are higher than us, so. And, and that conversation with respect to the contract, we can, we can save till, till January, but I, I just like to know, as the deputy would, you know, what are these calls of services that we're being charged for? How much influence does policing the Quinney Detention Center influence us, you know? And, and yes, we are responsible for court security in the courts. Unfortunately, when offenses happen at the courthouse, we have to pay for them as well. So, you know, I'd, I'd like a bit of a breakdown, if we could, and an explanation as to, I, I, I still, I still think that there are ways that we can work around paying for the policing of the jail, whether it's the, the penitentiary squad taking over the policing of it, or wait, may, it, it could be as simple as, as their bookkeeping, but I, I don't believe that the citizens of Napanee really should be paying the freight for the Quinney Detention Center.
Agreed. Counselor Pennell?
Thank you, Worship. I, I too want to jump on this bandwagon with Counselor Richardson and Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Just looking at the chart that was provided to us, with Napanee having 7,791 properties with a $4 million budget, puts us at $513. Loyalist with 7,216 with a budget of 2.5 million, it's down to 348. But the one that stands out to me is Prince Edward County with 14,557, with a cost of 4.8, I mean, and it's down to 332. So there's something drastically wrong here, and I too would like to have that answered.
Counselor Norrie?
Just on a completely different vein, and being new to this town, relatively new 12 years, have we ever looked into following the, the model of the KFLNA health unit and have a KFLNA police department in the state of Kingston? Do you want to take over all this? What would you charge? Have we ever looked into that, kicked the OPP out? Has it ever been looked into?
Regional, regional policing.
I don't like that word, but yeah, KFLNA. I like that.
KFLNA policing.
I can speak to it.
Certainly, Mr. Cowery.
We have, in the past, through a couple of unique approaches, but we have approached both Babel and Kingston. There is, you're, you're, when you get a price from a force, you have to be contiguous normally, but there is an exemption to that, in which case you can have a, you can have a consolidated police service board, bringing two police service boards together, that then allows you to have a price. So we have actually had discussions, detailed discussions with Kingston and Babel. We actually, at one point, had a price from Babel to police our area. The OPP certainly had, and in other municipalities who have done this have continued to have a lower price than what a municipal force can, can, can bid. But that, that, that was looked at in the past. As far as upper tier goes, there are a number of municipalities that have moved policing to the upper tier. It was discussed, it wasn't discussed at amalgamation at that point in time, and the rationale was, if you go back that far in history, is only the former town of Napanee paid for policing. So nobody else in the county wanted to touch it with a 10-foot pole, because prior to, prior to 1998, only municipalities that were, at that point in time, the history was, if you were larger than 5,000 and became a town, you had to then have your own force. We were grandfathered into that, so the former town had to pay for a police force, therefore pay for OPP, nobody else did, everybody else was just covered under the province. And so, at amalgamation, when the rules were changing, nobody wanted to touch that, you know, nobody wanted to touch that, so it wasn't something the upper tier was looking at. We have had conversations with regard to a regional force in the past, and the history behind that is, I guess quite frankly, is if you are Loyalist Township, Stone Mills, or Addington Highlands, looking at the cost per property, it's not necessarily a really enticing argument to say, let's, let's sit down with Greater Napanee and talk about, talk about a, a regional force, based on what the costs per properties are right now. Now, if there's a way to address that or mitigate that moving into the future, I think that those conversations, all those conversations still need to be on the table, because, again, the last real conversations were 20 years ago.
I'll go to Counselor Johnson and then Counselor McCormack.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree with the comments that we've heard this evening. The cost that we're facing for policing is astronomical. When you look at the number of properties that are paying over $500 per property, there's only nine, and we're one of the nine. We have, we 100% support our police force, we 100% believe in the coverage that the men and women who work for the police force provide this community. This is not a criticism of the work they do. This is questioning the accounting and the billing. And when we look at our budget, and this is one of the largest items in our budget, and we go back to every other department in our community and we say, wait a minute, you can't fix this many roads, you cannot fix this in the buildings, you cannot provide this service, and we don't question the policing, we're negligent. The, we did not have this option before because we were tied into a contract and we were handed a bill, and that was the end of that discussion. We are now at the point where our rural membership has said, wait a minute, we're not paying this much for policing, we don't use all this policing, well, neither does the urban center, so who is going to pick up the extra cost? I think there has to be, on the provincial level, some sort of, or perhaps not on provincial level, perhaps on the local level, everybody else in all the budgets that we have, everybody else goes back and looks at the number and says, we can save you money here, and we can save you money there. We never ask that of our police force. We just assume that they're going to, they get a blank check. If you work with any other professional service, if you work with architects or lawyers or accountants, they account for their time minute by minute, and there's a small amount of overhead, just like in OPP policing, that has to be taken care of. But the, the difference between what we're paying and what other communities are paying is astronomical, and we have been very generously offered an expansion on the Quinte Detention Center. It's going to bankrupt us. If, if our prices are this much higher compared to other communities, and they add how many more beds to this, to the detention center, who is going to pay for those? These are not all Napanee residents who are, who unfortunately are detained there. It's, there are more questions than answers, there are numbers that don't make sense, and I don't see how we can look at renewing the contract with the information that we currently have.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McCormack?
Worship, just an observation, the Picton detachment is known to be a training detachment, and in the summer, when the population growth in Picton is astronomical, the amount of officers that are out of Picton grows substantially, and even with that regard, they're a lot cheaper than we are, right? And just another point, there, there are businesses, let's say like in the automotive industry, if you go to a Ford dealer in Oakville, you're going to pay the same freight charge as the person in Vancouver pays, because they determined years ago that you can't favor. as the person in Vancouver pays because they determined years ago that you can't favor being next door to the plant and penalizing the one that's at the other end of the country. So everybody pays the same price. So in our case, our detachment serves more than just our municipality, and I think there's an argument there that the other surrounding municipalities should, should be paying closer to what we pay on average. We should have maybe a contract, if we end up with a contract, which is a regional contract, as was mentioned before.
Counselor Richardson?
And there are provisions under the act, I think, where we can have, and I think Mr. Cowery mentioned it, I think it's under section five, where there's no contract, you can have a, sort of a, one board as opposed to, it, it's just bizarre that we have one detachment area, but we have, if, if every municipality or detachment area had a contract, we'd have five or six different police services boards, which is bizarre because each police service board is supposed to be able to have an influence on who the detachment commander is. Well, if you've got five, you've got five police services boards and five services boards decide that they want five different guys, who gets the decision? So, and, and, and Counselor, and, and Ellen brought up a good point, is that we really have no, we have the ability to cut and slash and save money on, on everything except for policing. Now, I mean, areas that have municipal forces, they do have that ability because if, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Kingston was in line to hire six police officers a year and a half ago, and they said, we haven't got the budget for you, you can hire two. So you do have a lot more flexibility if you had your own police force. Not that I'm suggesting that's the route where we're going to go, but it just, I guess it's just frustrating in the fact that we have virtually no influence on what we pay. We get the bill, we pay the bill, and that's the end of it. So, and, and, and each municipality in this province has different needs, and each municipality has different things that they need the police for or don't need the police for, and, and I, I understand, I get why the provincial police has this cookie-cutter system, but I still don't like it.
No?
I don't think any of us do. So, so I think what we need to do tonight is, is if we are going, we have been afforded the chance after working on this for not getting it just in the, in the agenda today that we have to make a decision. This has been an ongoing effort to try and get answers from people that it doesn't even, it's not even the OPP, it's, it's MAG, it's everybody that we're not getting answers from, that we need to make sure that we're putting forth the right questions. Of all those places that, that you, and I'll go through it in, in more depth now, of all the places, Terry, that you talked about that are close to us, I wonder how many of them are county or regional seats, which puts, of course, all the court costs within them because that's where the courthouses are. So I, I wonder if that's apples to apples, because it's really hard to do it. Picton, Prince Edward, there is no Picton anymore. Prince Edward County is Prince Edward County, so their court costs are spread throughout the whole upper-tier municipality, and it's just a municipality. Forget about whether it's upper-tier or lower-tier. So it's spread throughout Wellington, Bloomfield, Amelia'sburg, all those places, so it, it's one, one place. Also, why are we paying for Quinte Detention when, which is not located in Quinte West, by the way? When we, when most of them aren't even from our area, they're being released into our area, and if they are, if they're re-offenders, why isn't that cost spread between the whole area that Quinte Detention is serving? Why isn't there, I mean, they've got to know what, what to charge for. If, if we can't have a pen squad, let's just not pay. Let's just say, when, when you send us the bill and it says it's Quinte Detention, divide that up between all the municipalities, whether they are, are, whether they've got their own forces because you're going to get into Quinte West, you're going to get into Babel, I don't know how far east and west we go. Why can't they pay their portion when it's, when it's happening here? To me, it seems pretty simple to do it that way. Also, why, when, when courts incidents happen here in Greater Napanee, because we are the county seat, this is where the commercial base is, this is where the retail base, where, where the factories, where everything is, so much happens within our borders that causes the calls for service. And I'm not going to go down this road with rural and urban, I have no intention of going down that, but many of them are from outside our policing area, and, and yet, we're getting charged for the call for service. Does it take a criminal off the road? Maybe it does, but to me, those are the questions that, as Ellen says, that we need to have them answered by you. I, I just think that their billing system stinks. I don't think there's any easier, easier way to put it. So what, what questions, now that we've got the time, what questions do, do we want to put to these people to answer? Because we may be asking for another extension. I was really surprised, and a lot of it is, is thanks to Ray putting their feet to the fire today to say, I'm pretty sure the council's going to wave goodbye to you. So you better give us an extension and you better answer some of these questions. What questions do you, do you want, what information do you want to see what we can get? And I'll let everybody, don't make it too complicated so that Ray doesn't get to have Christmas dinner at home. But what, 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 what more detail can we go for? Certainly.
If I may, like I say, it, it, I think it's really quite simple. It's just a breakdown of, of how our calls for service are billed to us. So what types of calls are, are billed to us? The location of those calls, and, and it's really quite simple because they've got the formula already set up, that, that certain, certain calls, if you have an assault call, it costs you this, if you have a car accident, it costs you that. But mostly the location of those calls and, and the number of calls. And, and I think what that will do is, it, it will differentiate what calls are going in and out of the Quinte Detention Center, what calls are generated or classed or, or, claimed to the courthouse. I mean, I mean, I don't, I, you know, we, the courthouse is there, we have to pay for it, I understand that. But the problem being is having the courthouse there as well, and we, and we do get funding for it. But every time there's a breach of probation or a breach of recognizance, there's a possibility it could get scored to the courthouse.
That's right.
Right? And, and we know that we pay for that. So just a breakdown of the calls, I think, and, and if they could differentiate, you know, break out the Quinte Detention Center, let us know what their cost, what, what's the actual cost of policing in that place? The courthouse and then the rest of the calls for service, like I say, I mean, we, we've got a great police force here, and, and I hope that the people that are out there watching and listening don't think that we're, we're unhappy with the policing that we're getting. It's just we're unhappy with what we're paying for and how, and how much we're paying, and I think that's just fair, so.
And how little control we have over it.
Well, yeah, and, and, and every, every municipality that's policed, really by the provincial police, have no control because, like I say, you have a set price of your base salad, or base price, and then the rest of it, from my understanding, is just calls for service, and you get billed for the calls for service, so. And, and I will not for one minute tell people not to call the police to save money because if you need the police, you call the police. But I think there are places where we can save some money, being maybe the jail, right? So, that, I mean, that would be a start anyway, so.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you. Yeah, building on that, I just very quickly went through the chart, and I pulled out the municipalities of Lenox County. I'm not naming names, but they're two-hundred-and-sixty-nine, two-hundred-and-eighty-four, three-hundred-and-fifty, and five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per property. Interestingly, looking at Aurelia as a larger municipality, there are four municipalities within, and they run three-hundred, two-seventy, two-ninety-seven, and five-hundred-and-seventy-three, which might be the highest of high. Similar sizes, except for Aurelia Center, which is fifteen-thousand people. From my perspective, looking at the numbers and hearing the things we're hearing and talking about, the province is not paying their share. The province is not paying for the things that they own, the courts and the jails and whatever. We have no flexibility when it comes to calls for service. And the idea of putting that in the contracts or in the billing cycle years ago was to recognize that some areas of the province are pretty quiet and some areas are a little more active, but that doesn't give us any flexibility. It's not like our water billing, where we can shut the tap off. As a council, as a community, we really don't have that much influence over bills for service, or, or, yeah, bills, or calls for service. They happen, and they happen because they have to happen, they happen because there was an accident, there was a situation, and they're the people you got to call. We can't just suddenly say, oh, we want to save some money, we're going to stop our calls for service. We certainly can't make that decision as council, yet we have to pay for it. It seems pretty obvious to me that the province is just not pulling their weight, and I think they need to pay for the things that they are responsible for, they are responsible for the Quinte Detention Center, and they're responsible for the courts, and yet we are the one municipality in this county that's paying the, you know, the greater portion of that. And it's blatantly obvious when you look at the numbers in the chart. That's the only difference we have here, because we've got the same number of people. And otherwise, when you go through the charts and you start comparing the different municipalities by numbers of properties, you can get pretty regular that it's always in that two-sixty to three-hundred-dollar per property range until there's a court and a jailhouse, and then it's way the hell over somewhere else. Pretty obvious that the province isn't paying their share, and it's, and I'm, generally speaking across the board, I'm pretty sick of the provincial government downloading and not paying their share. They download the service and not the funding to support it, and the taxpayer is being taxed a second time because they were taxed that in the first place when the province had it, they didn't have to give up that tax when they downloaded it, and then we got to tax them again on the property level to tax it again. The taxpayer's getting shanked every time for this, and here, yeah, good one, shanked, and it's, we're talking about jails. Anyway, so I, I, it's pretty obvious to me, and I think somebody needs to answer for that, because when you start looking at the numbers, you start crunching them, it starts to come out very obvious that the province is not paying their way.
Anything further?
How could you follow that?
I know.
Sorry.
No, I'm, I'm with you one-hundred percent.
Certainly.
Just, just a couple of questions and clarifications, so I don't, I know what to include in the letter in, in quite detail. The, the phasing of changes between municipalities, so basically referring to the year-over-year change that municipalities are having to pick up, and an, an analysis of what's the trend within the year-over-year as well. So I'm not sure if council's interested in, for instance, how our year-over-year has progressed because at one point in time when the, when, when the calculation first went through in two thousand and sixteen, we were to get a, a fairly substantial decrease that was phased in over five years. Now we are seeing the increase over years, so I'm wondering if some explanation as to the driver in that, if that is something that council's interested in.
Change, yeah.
Sure. I'll include that as part of their, their analysis. And I'm not sure the point with regard to the erosion of the base, because every percentage that changes from a calls for service to a base changes the sharing across the province as well, and we're obviously on the, the upper end of that. So whether there's some explanation of how of that, what is making up that change and how does it affect our community, whether that's an issue? The, the last point, I haven't heard anything on this, counsel, but I'm assuming you still want to pursue based on previous discussions we've had, is the entire revenue side of the component, which is Quinte Detention Center pays heads and beds, or, you know, they pay in lieu, they don't pay taxes, and that rate hasn't changed in such a substantial amount of time that even if we had to pay for policing, but Quinte Detention's payments back to municipality kept up, it could be, it could be tracked on the revenue side as well as the expense side if we knew what those expenses actually were, and I'm assuming council still wants to pursue that because there's an area where the OPP may actually be on the same side as us, pursuing that with the ministry.
Okay. In agreement, everybody?
Yep.
Okay. So if there isn't any further conversation, we do need to, to receive the information from the CAO on the OPP contract renewal report, and further receive the correspondence from Mr. Key from the OPP regarding the extension of the, to the end of January twenty-twenty-one for a decision from us and direct staff, and we have directed and you've given Ray the list here of things that, that we would like to have answered from them for our first or second meeting. And it'd be tough to get some of those answers or get some of those details before the first meeting, which is January the twelfth, that we're looking at the, the second meeting.
If, if I could suggest that council's direction be, because it may actually have to be a special meeting of council just on this particular topic, just based on the fact that the January meeting may also be almost as heavy as this meeting was from everything that's got moved, that, you know, if council wanted to give direction that I try and arrange, or that staff try and arrange for a meeting prior to the Roma delegation or the, the anticipated Roma delegations, and, and schedule a meeting after the Roma delegations or discussions afterwards as well because there may be follow-up that comes from the delegations that we could still need clarification from the OPP for. So if the OPP was at least prepared to have two meetings in January scheduled, one before, one after the, the Roma delegation, before council's required to make a decision on this because I want to give council as much opportunity to have that interaction, but I think that there may be things that came out of the Roma that you may need to get further clarification from the OPP. It's quite possible these meetings may be electronic just simply because of where we may be, so it may not be very cumbersome to set these up. It's just a matter of asking for time before and after, I think might be appropriate from council.
Okay. Counsel, good with that direction?
Put that in the motion, too?
Yes, yes. Susan, do you have what you need there? Any questions or comments?
Somebody needs to make the motion.
I thought Ray just did, sorry.
That won't be as heard.
No, that will not be well received, will it?
If Susan's got all that, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counsel Richardson. All in favor of the motion, motion is carried. I apologize, Mr. Cowery, that was not the right thing to say.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have a five-minute recess?
We certainly may. A recess for five minutes, please. Back at twelve minutes after.
Back at 12 minutes after. Mics are on now? Yeah. Okay, so we are at 11.3. CAO Service Area Updates stated December the 15th. Questions to Mr. Calery? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, worship. Um, I don't know what page it is, because I don't use paper, but under the heading Spring 2021, there's the review of the ATV bylaw.
Page 84 for council.
Page 84, for those of you still in the previous century. No, I'm just kidding.
Whoa.
So one of my concerns about this being reviewed in the spring is that we're missing an opportunity when it comes to snow clearing. And I know there is a number of people who use their ATVs or UTVs to plow for themselves or for their neighbors. And I'm wondering if I might propose a motion at this time that for non-commercial use, that we could direct staff to write to the OPP to exercise leniency when our residents are using such ATVs or whatnot for plowing snow, to allow families and friends to help out each other and neighbors, and that we might also include the Police Services Board in that communication.
So you're making that by way of motion?
I am, because, you know, to do something official without doing something official until we do something official.
So I'll, I'll take it as a motion. Do we have a second here for the motion? Counselor Penal. Okay, so we're gonna divide off into this, we'll have the conversation on this first, and then we'll get back to the CAOs. So, so comments or questions? Counselor Penal?
Thank you, worship. I did have a resident call me in regards to this. And one of the questions that he had was, you know, of course, what we were just talking about, if he's plowing his own driveway and he has to go out onto the road to push back the bank or something like that, then he's breaking the law. Or if he sees his neighbor struggling and, and he has a tool sitting there that could easily help push back the snow, that it's illegal for him to go down the road just to help him out. But the other question was, what, what if they have multiple properties and it's not for commercial? Is it, what happens if they have to run from one side of town to the other? Could we include something along those lines where, you know, as long as they're following all rules, helmets, lights, signal lights, brake lights, all that sort of stuff?
Slow-moving sign, I think.
Slow move, or slow-moving signs, along those lines.
May I? So just as, I, I guess my vision was that if we eliminate the non-commercial, those people are captured under MTO rules and whatnot. So if it's just helping out, or, or your property, you know, a couple streets over or what have you, we're asking for leniency. I don't expect the OPP to bust anybody for being obvious and out-plowing and not, you know, ripping around town. It's pretty obvious to the, to the officer at the scene to, to have that vision and discretion. And I'm just asking for them to exercise leniency. Obviously, we don't have the, the bylaw to support that, but I think that was, the intent was just to, in, in advance of the review, that we could at least ask for leniency in, in this situation.
Further comments or questions? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of the concept. I think I would also just like, added to that, a reminder to the people who are, whether they are driving an ATV or whether they are pushing snow by hand, to push snow from your driveway on one side of the road, across the road to the other side, creates a driving hazard, and neither one should be encouraged. Or, do we have a bylaw for that?
Yeah.
Yes. So whether you're shoveling by hand or using an ATV, taking snow from one side of the road to the other and leaving a dangerous situation on the roadway, needs to still, that still needs to be respected.
Okay, so what's our motion?
Just ask the OPP to exercise leniency. Sorry. Just ask for that leniency, a letter to the OPP to exercise leniency for those who are doing snow removal, non-commercial.
Counsel's wishes here. Go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
I, I agree with it, I don't disagree with it. Uh, I'm just trying to get my head around us asking for leniency. Is that something we would do? I, I, I agree with, I agree with the motion, I, I'm just trying to get my head around, can we ask for leniency with respect to enforcement of our bylaws? Is that something proper to do, or is it, is there another, I guess there's, is there another official avenue that we can take to, to get to where we need to go? I agree with, with the deputy mayor and the fact that I, it's kind of time-sensitive in the fact that, I'm sure we'll have our bylaws fixed for the spring with respect to trail riding and stuff, but it's, it's the snow removal right now that we have to deal with, so.
I guess, I didn't want to anticipate what the review might lead to, but I was hoping to be unofficial and just sort of saying, you know, we don't need to, we don't need to police somebody who's not really doing something foolish or dangerous. And like Counselor Penal said, if they're obeying, they're, you know, operating within safe limits and wearing their safety equipment, et cetera, et cetera, you know, maybe good lights on the vehicle, whatever. You know, I, I wasn't overthinking it, I was just trying to underthink it and say, let's just leave these people alone.
Mr. Calery?
Through the mayor to council, I, I think maybe a bit of a similar situation would be in the early part of the year where we, where we asked the OPP to give some warnings to people who are on the street overnight if there's not a snowstorm, just to, just to remind them and, and get out the communication. It's, I would take it the letter would be a little along those lines, just saying, "Council recognizes our bylaw is not perfect, that there may need to be some issues with that, so if you just let your officers know that there's a, you know, the, we're, we're sensitive to the fact that people are trying to help out each other a little bit, or, or help out their properties." The, the approach that staff has suggested here is to recognize the substantial nature of getting into a conversation with regard to ATVs and all-terrain vehicles. And we did that in the past when we came up with the bylaw we had that differentiated between county roads and municipal roads. And the, um, the Ontario Provincial Police, I'm gonna get the name of the unit wrong, but the unit that does the ATV was, was very, very helpful in working with both staff and the police service, the previous iteration of Police Service Board, to try and get public comment and understand the enforcement issues of an ATV bylaw from a police perspective, because it can be a difficult thing to try and enforce. And, uh, you know, and, and these pieces of equipment now go faster than some, some municipal vehicles actually go, uh, on, you know, their ability is unbelievable as far as speeds and, and things like that. So there, it's a, it's a large issue, and it's also a large issue that's tied directly into our whole conversation around trails and what we anticipate the future of our trails to be. And as we know, a lot of our, a lot of our residents have an idea of trails of being for two feet and your dog, you know, so six feet together walking up and down, and other ones are actually looking for a more motorized approach to, to trail, to trail networks. And it ties back into the whole idea of snowmobiles, ATVs, and everything else. So it's a very wide, broad-ranging topic, and it's gonna need a lot of consultation, which is why staff don't have addressed this approach, to actually try and bring in some additional supports to create the background and communication on this. So in understanding what the deputy mayor's asking for, I think is just a communication between the chief and, or the inspector simple and to his officers.
So do we need, do we need to do this by, by resolution and have it go through, or you just want a resolution to, to direct for leniency? I don't know what you want here.
I didn't intend it to be so, uh, such lengthy discussion. I just was asking for leniency, whatever, whatever seems to be the simplest and least official, but most sweeping in that.
So, so, I know Susan and I are both trying to figure out what, what, what it was. So it would be that we, that we ask for leniency for non-commercial? You do the, do the words here, 'cause...
Yeah, just leniency for non-commercial operation of ATVs or UTVs on our municipal streets for the purpose of removing snow from private driveways and such.
Non-commercial means they're not paid for.
Non-commercial, yeah.
Okay. You seconded that. You've got that, Susan? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Okay, further CAO Service Area Updates, conversation on that. Calery?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to, um, as council's aware, the first, I think it's about 10 pages, are what we consider outstanding items that staff are working on that are requiring council policy and direction. Um, I want to, I, I do appreciate the fact that there are a few items, and I won't go highlight them all, but there are a few items where the reports have not come forward tonight, where they were indicated that council had wished to try and address them in December. And I appreciate the fact that council, I'm not gonna say took pity on staff, but basically, based on the monster agenda that was developing for, for tonight's meeting, that some of those were moved into January. So we haven't changed the due dates, because we understand those were dates they were to be effective by, but some of the reports that aren't there will be on the next agenda. And they were just, it was basically balancing the length of the meeting tonight was what we were trying to accomplish with that from staff. So thank you for council, for your leniency on those few issues.
Counselor McCormack?
Thank you, worship. Just an update, Ray, if you don't mind, Carl, and now, and associates, do we know when we're getting information back regarding the rate that OPG is used for their assessment, please?
Yes. So, um, for an update to council is that, um, we were, we, staff were successful, and certainly, um, there was some assistance behind the scenes from our, our consultant in this. We were successful in securing the rate that was on the roll for 2020. Will be, will not be appealed and will be honored for 2020. So that is the first step. ACHURA power is, and we appreciated ACHURA power coming forward with that, with that particular decision. ACHURA power has also been notified and is aware that the, um, the PIL that applies for them as a company that's owned by OPG, that the municipality isn't necessarily happy with the PIL calculation rates because they're so dated. And so there is a work plan that is being developed and being brought forward. And, um, our consultant is waiting for some additional background information on the Quinney Detention, and I was waiting until after tonight's meeting to make sure I understood all of the questions, because we have asked for a delegation with the Ministry of Finance through support with our consultant to not only look at the PIL rates that are being calculated for ACHURA, but also on Quinney Detention, although they're a different type of rate, they're all, I'm gonna say somewhat stale-dated as far as when they were last updated, which is causing real revenue issues on our end. So that work plan is being put together. They are waiting for some information on staff on the, on the Quinney Detention front, and the intention is to have a report prepared and available for presentation to the minister if we get our delegation in January. And if we're not successful in the delegation, being able to have council request a meeting outside of Roma directly with the ministry to discuss those particular issues one-on-one.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Anything further? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive the report. I would receive Counsel McCormack, seconded by Counsel Johnson. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Infrastructure Services, 2021 Capital Bulk Water Meter Purchase. Okay. So Peter's here for any questions. You have a recommendation before you that council received for information, the report and further that council authorized staff to proceed with the purchase of 300 radio frequency meters from Neptune Technologies, as approved in the 2021 Utilities Capital Budget at a cost of $105,000 plus HST. And further, the council accepts the procurement process undertaken by municipal staff as having met the goals and principles of the municipal procurement policies forming part of the Town of Greater Napanee by law 05-05, Section 5.16, which is a single source, as amended. Moved by Counsel Penal, Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any comments or questions? Deputy, sorry, Counsel Penal?
Through you, worship, I just have a comment. I just recently had one of these installed at the house. The installation was very quick and painless, and it's, it's a neat little unit, and I, I am happy with being able to, to move this motion because it, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
So, so, Peter, because I, I know it has been discussed, I am gonna ask you a question if you wouldn't mind coming up to answer it, so that everybody at home can hear it. So the, the benefit of these over the prior use meters that we had, what, as far as reading, I'm sure that we have, there's something, but what does the homeowner, what, what does the meter owner or, or the meter resident, what's their benefit of it?
So, through you, worship, uh, so upon request, the staff can get the history, billing history off there. So if there's a leak, we can pick it up, time of day, average use, there's a lot of data that we can pull off over a 90-day period. If the homeowner's looking to closely monitor, they can go down and shine a flashlight on top of the meter register, and they can look at the readings daily if they so choose. So they can catch a leak very early in the process if they, if they wish to be that diligent.
And is this the first implementation of this type of meter to our municipality?
Uh, these meters have been installed since 2011, so at the, at the rate of 300 meters, there's gonna be, three years from now, will the entire municipality, will we all radio frequency? So to put that in perspective, when it comes to reading times, there's six billing cycles for, for the entire year. We used to be upwards closer to three weeks to physically pound the pavement to read all these things. When we're complete, you'll drive, drive the vehicle around for a few hours and have it all. So there's, there's a whole series of, of, of time savers to these, to these meters.
So every, every new build?
Yeah.
Will get them?
Correct.
And then anyone wanting a replacement will get them as well?
Yeah, so as far as, so we have a standard replacement cycle, so based on 300 meters, that's about a 10-year replacement cycle, that's what the manufacturer recommends. Uh, our intent is to move, to do this for another three years, and then back that freak, our test data that we have, we have an internal test bench, and our test data is showing that we can extend that replacement cycle out to about 15 years. So there's really no advantage, uh, there's no advantage to the homeowner wanting to get this data unless they're looking to get that billing history. They can watch the daily, uh, the daily usage, they can pick that off there with their old meter, new meter, either way, they can do it, so.
I would just question Donna, and that's why I wanted to question you. Counselor Penal and then Counselor McCormack?
Through you, worship. Peter, I just wanted to clarify, when you said to go downstairs and shine a light on, 'cause I, I did some investigation on this, and I think what you mean by that is that there's this, if you look at the meter, it's blank, but there's a solar panel on the meter... a solar panel on the meter, and you, you shine the light on it, then it like, then the digits light up. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, through you worship, correct. So yeah, you'd have to have a flashlight and a direct light on it. Like, turning the lights on your basement wouldn't do it.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Counselor McCormack.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Are there any meters out there or coming down the, the pipe where the information could be sent electronically to your office, let's say?
Yeah, through you worship, so that technology does already exist. So it's called fixed area network. It requires communication towers strategically placed around the municipality. How many, we're not sure. We're not quite there yet. The first step in that process is to get the RF meters installed. And then you can either go, then you can either do, you know, a two-hour drive to pick up all those readings. If you want to get into fixed area networks, the advantage of that is if you're trying to do a water balance in a certain area, and you have zone metering on your mains, then you can click download and you can read, read it daily, and then you can pick up leaks and stuff like that. So it, it is there, but it's, it, it comes with another price tag.
But it would be the same meters?
Correct. Yeah, we wouldn't have to change. We wouldn't have to change technology.
All right, thank you.
Anything further? Thanks, Peter. So you do have a recommendation before you? Do I, I do have a motion already, we just haven't voted on it? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Infrastructure Services, Public Works, Public Access to Closed or Unmaintained Road Allowances. Thank you, Wayne. So you have a recommendation before you, but I'm sure that we will have some questions of Wayne. So council have questions of Wayne? Wayne, I'll ask you to come up to the mic if you would please, and thank you. Okay, Counselor McCormack.
Well, worship, as many know, including yourself and Wayne, I've been involved with many discussions regarding this, so I'm going to try and start the ball rolling by suggesting that I would like to recommend in this one particular case that we're talking about, from Highway 33 to Number 8.
On Bathurst Street.
Yes, that we put concrete barriers in place that would allow foot traffic and bicycles and, and that kind of item, but prevent large vehicles so that we don't have the ongoing problems of people with their GPS giving them wrong directions, having to send the fire department out there to extricate vehicles and people from vehicles and so on. So I've put a lot of thought to it. That's my suggestion, and I'd like to start the conversation with that.
So I just want to make sure that I understand you, that this, this would be a permanent closure of that, that there would be no large vehicle access to it ever?
These barriers could be removed if needed, but it would prevent, as we've had in discussions, if we were to go with gates, there'll be people damaged the gates. You have the problem of having to lock and unlock it. In this particular instance, the two farmers have access at either end without having to be hindered by the, the concrete blocking if we go that route. And the solar farm, it's the same situation, they have their own access, so.
That's correct. I wasn't sure. I thought that both farmers on either end were utilizing this as the main access to their trail, like to their fields.
No, so off of County Road 8, where the hydro disconnect or panel is, that has to be serviced from time to time. If the concrete barriers are just past that, hydro can help themselves. There's access for both farmers to get to their properties prior to that. And the same thing for the, off of Highway 33, if, where we put the temporary barriers up, if we move them inwards just a little bit, that would stop the, the traffic from being able to get down that road. And the only, you know, it wouldn't prevent people from using the, the pathways or the road as for leisure and whatnot, but it would prevent vehicles, you know, sizable vehicles.
Yeah, all options are on the table. I just didn't want to pull the card myself. I just wanted some input for some policy direction. We're trying to maintain consistency with the other municipalities and the tax system. Other agencies have tried individual agreements and different things, but the fact that it's so inconsistent, so hard to monitor, we're all looking at a unified system, some direction that will provide consistency across the barriers. We kind of mentioned four-wheeler systems and snowmobiling and recreational usage. So if we had a consistent system, there wouldn't be confusion as you progress through the system. And we, we kind of want direction, and then as a tax group, we develop a more detailed policy based on that direction. So on the bottom, you know, that there's a one to seven options that we're considering. But then the, the primary thing that should be considered is, should we get, should these be assessed for the value for future development? Are they necessary? And, you know, do we convey them, the lands onto interested parties? Basically, I think we should have a baseline inventory of what we have, what we need, and then what we do from there. And then from there, I think we can develop effective policy for the areas that we're going to use, the, the areas that we're not. Cuthbert Lane, for example, there's a report from council with the dumping, and it is very common. We have to do extra monitoring on these abandoned roadways. So Cuthbert Lane is one section, there's other ones around. But if we have a uniform way of doing it, we can respond to the public in a fashion that's consistent, not special customized for, for the special individual, do it this way for the other. So we're just trying to get continuity of policy and some direction that way. But the first step should be inventory, and then assessment of the value of this to this municipality. And that, we'd have to work through the development section there where we get the assessment, saying is there future development, is there planned development? And that falls under my notice forte, but from there, I guess we can proceed on. I just want hard direction here, and then, then we can develop a bylaw that's consistent with the other tax groups.
So Wayne, just so that I understand you, you want hard direction on this particular one, which Counselor McCormack is speaking about? Or you want hard direction on how we're going to try and make a policy and stay with it?
Of how we're going to make a policy and proceed with it. As for this one that Don and I have, and yourself have worked extensively on, at right now, the barriers have been fairly effective, except we have a damaged fence incident. There's a 90-degree S-turn in the center, people appear to have gone on a joy drive, went through the fence system, didn't acknowledge the turn. So the barriers in and of themselves are just temporarily movable, everybody can access. So it looks like that has happened, even though we took the measures. So maybe we have to consider a firmer option.
So my recommendation is we try this and see how it works, and then that would give us input for a more broader bylaw. And, I mean, I've been on council for two years, and I've, this has been a challenge for two years. I'd really like to see something happen here. We've tried different avenues, it hasn't worked. The concrete barriers would please both the farmers that are affected by this, and I think it's something that we can, we could, we could try out. If it doesn't work, we could always come back to it. But for now, and if they were placed not side by side, but with enough room for smaller ATVs or snowmobiles, cyclists to be able to maneuver through it, but prevent pickup trucks, which has been a big problem, and other motor, like larger-type vehicles, so.
So what you're saying is this would be a one of until we can make a policy on the rest of it, but would solve the problem that's been kicking around with us for three or four years?
Correct. And give us an opportunity to see how it works, and would help us in making a decision on other similar situations down the road. But this is the only one that I'm involved in.
But, but we're all involved in all of them. So, but we still need, but we still need to get a policy, which I think is going to be tough because they're all individual ones, but we still need to somehow come up with a policy that staff doesn't have to come back to us for each and every one of them. I understand what Mr. Taylor is saying in that they're also very, they're also very different, and they're treated differently. We've been trying to become a council that is lenient and, and bends when things are different, but we still need to be able to follow some kind of procedure so that people aren't saying, he gets this, but she doesn't get it, and they don't get it, and it makes it tough on staff, too. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Counselor McCormick. If this would be a fix even for the winter, then, then it would be good. But I still think that as a council, and maybe not tonight, maybe with tax, you know, the tax committee coming back to us, all the other lower-tier municipalities looking to find the same sort of thing. I don't know whether we'll ever come to a common ground for, for anything that's going to, well, obviously, we can't make everybody happy, but anything that's going to try and make it fair for everyone. Mr. Calery, were you wanting to speak to this?
Just.
Okay.
Just in, in, in support of what Mr. Taylor's saying and the information that was in the service area update as well, is that the, I guess the, whether it's the resolution or the amendment that, that Counselor McCormick is putting forward would fit in very well with the report that, that's being brought forward for a formal report to come in. And this report, the analysis would be done after the strategic planning discussion in January as well, which has these trail networks on, on that as we discussed with regard to, to that. So council will have a formal conversation about what we want trails to be used for in the future. Tac will continue if the council accepts this report, proceeding with a policy based on these seven factors to come back with in the spring. And in the meantime, if I understand Counselor McCormick correctly, do an analysis on how well over the winter months and maybe into the spring that the barricades have worked on that as a potential discussion point around Tac. So I think all three fit together very nicely.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Thank you, worship. I, I agree with Counselor McCormick that in this case, the, the hard barriers are probably the most appropriate course of action, and then here and now. But I also agree that we need to do at least a high-level review or inventory of our road allowances that are unmaintained or unopened or what have you. I think there, I think we can probably anticipate that they'll fall into just a few categories. Maybe we'll have three to five different categories of roads, but I wouldn't want to say that we can develop a single static policy that applies to all. This one's unique in and of itself in that there's a pole line on it, and it's a pole line that supports the Sun Edison Solar property. For that reason, I can't imagine any landowner wanting to take ownership of that road allowance. There are lots of others that, that may be perfectly appropriate. Cuthbert Lane between Hambley and County Road 9, man, I remember driving that in 1986 in my Pinto. I wouldn't go down there with a dirt bike today at more than five kilometers an hour. That thing's a nasty road. Now, the, the north section that goes from Hambley Road to County Road 9 by the river, by the old George Lyons Building, that's a whole different kettle of fish there. That was never really developed as a road at all. So, you know, they're all very unique and individual, but maybe through an inventory, we'll come up with some categories or so, you know, a smaller grouping so that we can start to apply policy to groups initially to make it a little easier on staff. But in this case, in the here and now, I support Counselor McCormack's interest in putting up hard barriers. And in speaking to Mr. Windover, that is the desired outcome for them down there as well.
So, so let's separate these two if it's, if it's okay with council. So Counselor McCormack has a motion, which if you, Susan, do you have the information from Counselor McCormack, or do you want him to restate it? No, you're good. I need a second or four with Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any further conversation or?
One question, your worship, and when can we have this done?
We can have this done before Christmas.
All right. It's on record.
Okay.
You heard him, Peter.
So, so, so don't, don't go away, Wayne. So all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Okay, we need to provide further direction, further direction for policy direction to staff regarding public use of closed and unmaintained. So at this point, I think that we're still gathering information, if I'm not, and, and working through the tax committee. So I would entertain a motion then, if council wishes, that, and that staff is in agreement with on this, that, that we keep going forward to try and bring forward a bylaw that would give us some guidance and maybe two or three options that are, that are hardcore, well-described, and this is the way we do. And hopefully, it would be countywide so that we're not having to come back to that. And, and then you've got a little Bible to go by, Wayne.
Perfect.
Is that, is that the sort of motion that would help you?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor Richardson. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thanks very much, Wayne.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Infrastructure Services, Development Services to establish Part 8 building fees, public comments received. You have a recommendation before you that council received for information, the onsite sewage system fees report, and further that council approved the associated bylaw to further amend bylaw number 2009-09 as amended to an act fees related to the installation, replacement, and review of onsite sewage system and associated planning. So we have had the public notice? I'm sorry.
Just to confirm with Mr. Knobz that there hadn't been any further public comments received since the agenda was circulated?
Okay. Nothing, nothing further received. And we did have the public notice out, and we do have the staff report before us, so council's wishes.
Your worship, I move that we go ahead and do this, adopting the fees that were used by the Health Unit for this year, and that we continue with those fees going forward under the schedule. I understand that we are to begin inspections as of January 1st, but I also know that the Health Unit has been, I'll politely say, lax in, in maintaining a level of service as they approach the end of their service term. And so I would suggest that maybe we enable our staff, and they are ready, to begin these as soon as possible. I spoke to Mr. Knobz earlier today on this point, and he says they, they have the equipment, and they have the knowledge and the training and certification to go now. Once we pass this bylaw, they could start tomorrow. If, if an application comes in and there's hesitancy from the public health, and given the fact that we're in the middle of December, if somebody wants to get their application in, why would they apply to the Health Unit for something that's not even going to happen until January? I think we should open the door now. I think Health Unit may be anticipated, it was open the 1st of December for us. But I know there's been instances where they've been hesitant, and maybe it was one inspector or what have you, but anyway, so I'll, I'll make the motion and maybe politely suggest that we're, we're open for business immediately.
Seconded, Counselor Richardson. Comments or questions?
I'll concur with the deputy that I've had an inquiry, that they went into the Health Unit, and they didn't really want to get involved in it, and, and the question was, so what do we do now? So.
So I'll, I think maybe, I don't think we need to add it within the motion, but then if we can get the advertising out and, and get it out to the public that this is the way that it is, and, and I'm sure that if anyone is coming in looking for building permits or, or even looking at any kind of development that is going to be on a septic tank, that staff would advise them right away that they don't need to go and see the Health Unit, that it's on ours. Okay? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Are we going to get some form of accounting from the Health Unit to say, to confirm whether or not they have any open, open applications that haven't been resolved yet?
Good question. So, so there's a little bit more direction. Counselor Johnson is saying, would, could we please contact the Health Unit to make sure that there are not any open unresolved files sitting on their desk right now that should be transferred to us to handle if they wish, or we get the money, too?
Good luck with that.
Pardon?
Oh, I just said good luck with that, but I really didn't mean to be.
Oh, but just, just for customer service, that, that's, that's a really good point, Counselor Johnson. I have a motion. Have we voted on it? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Infrastructure Services, Morning Star Mission Temporary Use of Town Land. We have before you a recommendation that council received for information, and further that council approved the request to use town property for the temporary storage of construction, construction-related materials during the renovation of the Morning Star Mission Building at 58 Dundas Street. Madam Clerk.
Sorry, if council would wish that we could add to that recommendation, just that there be an agreement put in place for the encroachment?
Certainly, we can add that to it. Deputy Mayor Kaiser? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
So I'm understanding that the Morning Star Mission's kitchen is undergoing renovations, and mostly the equipment was put into the dining room. And as such, they cannot use the dining room for social visits, whatever, for their regular clients because of social distancing isn't afforded when all this equipment is stored in there. They're seeking to store that in a container, but they don't have the property for it. So they really just want it on the very edge of their property, which means it's mostly on municipal property. I support this. It's a very temporary situation, as long as the agreements are in place that allow it to only be there for the coming six months or 12 months as they deem. You know, I think we can say it's going to be less than a year. It might be more than six months, but, you know, we have to do our part to help out, and this is a pretty minor thing, to say, yeah, drop the container there for it. We're not concerned about the structure of the container as a dwelling or building or whatever. I mean, it's its own structure, and it's recognized as such. It's just the siding, and the siding puts it on our property, but it's a very temporary situation. I'm understanding that they are willing to sign agreements to say that, and I recognize that, and I think that's all we need in this case. I don't think we need a formal building permit process. This is a one-off kind of situation. And again, we're supporting the mission and the clients that use it. So I'm making the motion.
A seconded for that motion? Counsel Johnson? Further comments or questions? And I think within those containers, too, we'll go, of course, they've got all their tables and chairs, which they don't need because of the social distancing as well. And I think when they're working down there, it's almost a hazard because they're tripping over everything while they do it. Hopefully, the kitchen will be done soon. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. I guess with that, too, as I know it will be communicated to them, and I don't know how, other than this meeting this evening, how we communicate to the neighbors who have been very good to the mission, but if we get asked questions, I'm sure that it'll be in the council notes for this evening, and any questions can be directed to us to give better answers, or if they so wish. Emergency Services Fire Master Plan Request for Tender. So you have before you a tender report, and we receive it for information. John Chief, did you wish to speak to this? Okay. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, worship and council. Through your worship, our fire master plan basically is a plan of what the fire department does, what it provides to its community. Our last plan was overdone in 2013, so it's overdue. It was basically a five-year plan. So our plan is to go out to tender, request to go out to tender now, start moving forward with it, because it does take a little, few months of a process to do the research. The idea is to find out with the community, council, our firefighters, what we think we should be doing, or are we doing the things that we should be doing, or are there things we should not be doing? So basically, that's what the plan is. If there's any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, are you looking for somebody to take over this project entirely, or somebody to work with one of your staff members on enhancing your project?
Basically, it would be an outside consultant doing the research, and we would have all the input and community with the input from them.
Anything further from council? If not, it would entertain a motion to approve. Counsel McCormick, Counsel Richardson? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Be there for a minute, Chief, because we've got a few other questions.
Yes.
Emergency Services Update to Establish, Maintain, and Operate a Fire Department Bylaw that Council Receive for Information. The Emergency Services Update to Establish, Maintain, and Operate a Fire Department Bylaw Report and Further that Council Direct Then an Updated Establish, Operate, and Maintain a Fire Department Bylaw Be Brought Forward Later in the Meeting for Approval. Council? Motion? Counsel Johnson? Deputy Mayor Kaiser? Any questions of the chief regarding this? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Award of Contract for Replacement of Self-Contained Breathing Apparatus. We have a recommendation that we receive for information. The Emergency Services Award of Contract for Replacement of Self-Contained Breathing Apparatus and Further that Council Approve and Award the Purchase of the 36 MSA G1 Self-contained Breathing Apparatus and Related Components to AJ Stone Company Limited for the Amount Questions to the chief regarding this? Deputy Mayor, no. Counsel Penal?
Thank you, worship. Good evening, chief. You know, when we're looking at these numbers, I just wanted to go through some questions with you, just so that everybody is on the same page. Four hundred and forty-two thousand is a lot of money, but I just have five questions, if we don't mind.
Just before you get into the questions, can I have a motion to proceed past 10 o'clock, please? Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Counsel Penal, all in favor of that motion? Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, now you can go.
Is it okay just to ask the questions? Carry on?
Sure. Carry it right on.
Okay, thank you.
So chief, how many SCBA units does the Greater Nappany Emergency Services have in total?
At this time?
At this time, yeah.
We have 40 SCBA, 100 SCBA cylinders, and 67 masks at this time.
100, and sorry, you said 60 cylinders?
100 cylinders.
100 cylinders, sorry. Of the total amount of SCBAs, how many of them, including the new purchase, are of the brand of the MSA?
All the ones we use right now are MSA.
So they're?
Or replacing, yes.
Okay. And how many of the existing units have thermal imaging capabilities?
The ones we have right now, not at the time that was an available option, the technology when we bought those was actually just starting to come out, thermal cameras at that time.
I recommend anybody to just throw this on to YouTube and search these G1 units and look at the thermal imaging units, which is fantastic, where it's actually part of the units in handheld, whereas you're not carrying in a second unit. And after the purchase of the 36 units and the AD masks that you're asking for, when will the next purchase be scheduled for?
It'd be the same kind of span right now. The ones that'll be replaced, when we get them next, it'll be 15 years, so it'll be, let's see?
Thirty-six.
Yeah. Twenty, thirty-six when they'll have to be replaced again.
Okay, fantastic. And the last thing, because I did do my research on this, which these look like great units. I discovered on that these MSA units have a great capability of being able to share air if somebody is trapped, or compared to a different option that's on, that we actually receive quotes on. Could you just explain a little bit for everybody what the ease of sharing air is with these units?
Basically, under NFPA, National Fire Protection Association requirements, the standard on the packs, a number of years ago, there's a universal air connection for, so the bottles can be quickly filled. If a firefighter becomes trapped inside a building, he can't get out, he's going to continue to breathe, and eventually, he's going to run out of air in his cylinder. So that was a safety device they put on the packs, so air can be transferred into his pack. MSA, with their design for that, came out with a short length of high-pressure transfer hose, so firefighters with the firefighter can use his transfer hose, connect to his own pack, and equalizes the pressure between the two. That way, he can give air to the other firefighter that's running out of air, use some of his air out of his cylinder. There's also what we call RIT kit, that's, we have three of them out right now, one carrying each pumper. It's an hour bottle, it carries a lot of air, but it has to be brought in from outside, and it can be used to transfer air and fill the down firefighter's or trapped firefighter's bottle, too. The other competition, Scott has decided that they don't want the transfer air from a firefighter's bottle to a firefighter's bottle, they want to rely just on the RIT kit, so they can't transfer air to another firefighter's bottle. So MSA can actually transfer air to a Scott pack or bottle, but Scott can't transfer air to an MSA.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
And the advantage of that also is the fact all are mutual aid partners, all MSA users also.
Okay, that's a big help. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of the chief on this? If not, council, you do have a recommendation before you to approve. Ward? Moved by Counsel Richardson, seconded by Counsel Norrie. Any further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
11.11. Community and Corporate Services Bylaw to Amend at the 2021 Tax Rates and Fares Increases. We have a recommendation that council receive for information, the Community and Corporate Services Bylaw Amendment for Opposed Tax 2021 Tax Rates and Fares Increase Report and Further that Council Consider a Bylaw Amendment Later in the Meeting. Council's wishes on this? We have received some information, which I believe is, it is in our package, comments from people concerned about a few things. Counsel McCormick?
Thank you, worship. If you recall, a couple of months ago, one of our residents was transported by ambulance to the hospital in Nappany, and when he was discharged, he took a taxi back to his residence not far from the Glanora Ferry. And he's a 72-year-old gentleman, and the taxi driver that took him up asked, the comment was something to the effect, "You don't mind if I smoke, do you?" And so I remember bringing it up, and you were able to speak to the owners of the taxi company, but today I read some other complaints, if you will, that came through the town clerk with similar allegations, and then there's allegations of uncleanliness and that kind of thing. So I pulled out the bylaw, and I see that we have general taxi cab inspections in the bylaw. And I was just going to ask, who administers those, and how often do they happen, and how are they performed? Because if we have residents that are complaining about the cleanliness of the vehicles, and if that's the case, then are we dropping the ball? Are we not doing the inspections, or what's the process?
Madam Clerk, and we did discuss this today, and I don't think it's a ball dropping. I think it's maybe something that we haven't been faced with before, but I will let Madam Clerk speak to it.
Yes, there is stipulation in the bylaw regarding inspections of the taxi cab vehicles. The town does receive safety documentation for each vehicle annually. Formal inspections have not been carried out. This is the first number of complaints that we've received through the town on vehicle maintenance and cleanliness.
So just to continue, worship, I understand we only have one taxi company in Greater Nappany, and it seems to me that if you are going to be the beneficiary of being able to be the only taxi cab company, I would think that we would expect that the cabs would be clean and in good operating condition. The safety inspection, that's a mechanical thing, it's not an appearance thing. And if we have taxi drivers that are actually smokers and suggesting or asking if they're allowed, you know, if they would mind, I mean, that's putting somebody in a bad position. You're 72 years old, you're on your way back from an emergency run to the hospital, you're not feeling that good to start with. Do you want to have an argument with a cab driver? I don't think so, but anyways, that was reported to us, so. There was some comment as well about punctuality, and it's also part of the bylaw that they have to be on time. If they're going to take a call and say they're going to be there in 10 minutes, they should be there within, you know, a certain amount of time, close to 10 minutes. And why are we getting complaints that they're not showing up on time or so? I just would like to suggest maybe that it's a good time for us to maybe have a separate conversation to see how we can help and how we can go about working with the owners of the taxi cab company and trying to improve the service overall for the residents, because here, they're asking for a rate increase, and I can appreciate that people are not too keen on that if this, in fact, is going on.
No, I don't disagree at all, and I think a lot, certain, I think probably, perhaps, as you say, being the only show in town, and they also, because we don't have our regular seniors bus that's running, I think a lot of people have had to start to depend on, due to COVID, this mode of transportation, which has brought a lot of things to the attention. So I certainly don't disagree with what you're saying and what we should be doing. Counsel Norrie?
I saw in the news Belleville's going to a ride-share program from Thunder Bay, not Uber, but I forget the name of the company. Could anybody in our staff or somebody talk to Belleville and see what they're doing? Because maybe a little competition will be a good kick in the ass for, for, sorry, I'm quoting someone from their driveway. But anyways, just an idea. I mean, we're not a very big town, but if they're doing it in Belleville, how far is the drive-by here with some ride-sharing?
And transportation is certainly one of the things that I'm sure that in our strategic plan, we're going to be looking at, so I think all the suggestions are good. What, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then I think I saw Counsel Richardson put up his hand, and then we just need to know, need to be able to give staff some direction to go. We don't need to approve this this evening.
I guess I'm picked up on McCormick's comment about the smoking in the cab, and I remember him saying it back in the spring or summer, whenever we talked about it previously. I'm concerned about that because that's smoking in the workplace. And, I mean, I heard a story a year and a half, two years ago, about a farmer getting charged for smoking in the cab of his own tractor, you know, because he was on a public road at the moment, smoking in the workplace. This is different, and this is a far, you know, you've got a paying customer in your vehicle, you wouldn't smoke, I mean, Ellen wouldn't smoke in her store if she was greeting customers or what have you. That's a whole different level of infraction, I guess, and I don't know if we can suggest that that be pursued, but it really should be, and it should have been called to the attention of the cab company immediately, and it should have probably been reported. Obviously, that individual felt it wrong because they commented at Counsel McCormick or whoever, but that's the one that concerns me most of all. I mean, not to belittle the other stuff, but I'm very concerned about that one.
And actually, it was reported, because I did take it back to the cab company.
Okay.
After Counsel McCormick had reported it, had reported it to me. Counsel Richardson?
Just briefly, worship, I was just wondering when the last time we've increased these fares? I see it was a 2011 bylaw. Was it 2011 when we increased the fares, or have they been increased since?
Madam Clerk?
The last time the fees were increased was in 2017, to take effect January 1st of 2018.
Okay, thank you.
And I think at that point, we had more than one cab company, and they did bring forward a fairly detailed request, if I'm not mistaken. Did you have your hand up, Deputy Mayor?
I did. I was wondering if it's time to poll other municipalities and see if these rates are even in keeping with what would be common or normal, Ganon Oakway to Trenton, Quinney West, whatever.
No, I don't disagree. We just need to give council some direction here, please. Not council, we need to give staff some direction here, please. Oh, there'd be another one.
Well, maybe, I mean, with the assistance of council, maybe one council or two council members, because I know staff are challenged as well with all the reports that we ask, but I think it would be necessary for us to put a committee together to review and determine, even do some inspections, and assess the situation, and then go forward from there, while at the same time, what Deputy Mayor is suggesting is to poll different municipalities, and what Counsel Norrie recommended as well, looking into other, you know, opportunities. So.
Okay. Would be rare that council would bring back a report, council themselves would bring back?
No, to assist.
But to assist would be, would be?
Do some groundwork.
Yeah, would be a great idea. So a suggestion might be, because we could go around this all night, is to refer or defer? So a suggestion might be, because we could go around this all night, is, is to defer or defer. Which one am I doing here? To put it off until January with the recommendation that we will look at, A, different procedures for, and discussions with the owner with concerns, a procedure for taking concerns to them as soon as we receive them, and also then looking at other alternatives for transportation within.
Could you do a friendly amendment on that, please, Madam Mayor?
I can't make the, I can't make it, but it's somebody down there can friendly.
Do you have the motion and then add to it?
Okay. So I will make the motion that we do that. And I would also like direction given to bylaw in order to do inspections. If we're offering, if we're, if this service is licensed through the town, then we also have a commitment to the people who live here that the service we're providing is in a timely and clean manner.
Did you get all that?
You can shorten it.
But part of that will be that council will certainly assist in any way. You've, you've got a lot on your plate for January, February, and March. Certainly.
Madam Mayor, just to save a step, then, could counsel include in the, in the motion just to then defer two point, or twelve point seven as well? So the bylaw, just for the bylaw to move into the next meeting.
Okay. Have we voted on it? All in favor of the motion. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
You, Worship?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I have to put my hat on, be caregiver and head home.
Okay, no, I understand. Thank you very much for staying with us this long. All the best.
Thank you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Oh, yes, and Merry Christmas.
What are we? Don't throw them at my car when you leave, please.
He just gave me an idea.
Okay, so we're on to, on to bylaws here.
Now we can vote.
Oh, yeah. All in favor of the motion. Motion's carried. Bylaws you have before you, one, two, three, four, five, from twelve point one to twelve point six. Would council be in favor of doing them all at once? I can see how it's gonna happen then. So bylaws two point one through two point six, eliminating two point seven for a second and finally passed for a third reading. Counsel Richardson, Counsel Johnson, all in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Any notices of motion? Any statements by members?
You skipped new business.
Pardon?
You skipped new business.
Oh, geez. Oh, it is at the very bottom. I put a line to it. Sorry. New business? Any new business?
No, I got nothing. Well, we took care of it in this service area.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Any notices of motion? Any statements by members? Counsel McCormack.
Just something that I heard when apparently the, the nuclear plant, hey? The nuclear plant's gonna close down in two thousand twenty-five, apparently. And the Lennox generating plant is set up to run on oil and gas. But apparently, when the gas line came down the corridor, the T that came off is not able to supply both of the plants. And so you're shaking your head yes.
I'm agreeing.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I've been told that when the plant, the nuclear plant shuts down, we're gonna be running both of these hydroelectric plants at full capacity to make up. And there's a big concern that they're gonna have to burn a lot of oil to maintain the operation of one of the plants. So I just wanted to bring that up so that somewhere down the road, we, when we have more time, we can start to think about that because that's a major concern. If in a short four years, we start seeing big plumes of black smoke on Highway thirty-three to, to offset the, the closing of the nuclear plant.
Very good point. Okay, thank you. Any further statements by members?
I'll just take this opportunity on December fifteenth to wish everyone in this room and in this municipality a Merry Christmas. It's, I, I know COVID has changed our world pretty significantly, but I don't think anybody's gonna deny themselves some of the pleasure of company, of Christmas, of family and such. And, you know, even school kids are coming out of school early so that they can self-isolate for an extended period of time prior to Christmas dinner so that they can see Grandma and Grandpa. I'm not encouraging gathering, but I know what's gonna happen, and I just wish everyone a safe and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anything, anything further? I would certainly echo what Deputy Mayor has said. Been a very interesting year. I've done a couple of interviews lately just on winding up the year. And anyone that has interviewed me said just what every mayor and warden across Eastern Ontario has had the same thing. So they just can't believe that we're still in it, how long it's gone on, and that we just don't be able, seem to be able to, to, to get past it and beat it down. And I guess it's just gonna take, take one more push. We have been very, very fortunate in this area. But our numbers are climbing terribly, and I would expect after Christmas that it's, it's gonna be even worse. But to add a good note to that, I think that we need to, as usual, turn to our own staff that are doing a food drive for next week. And it's always been, and even though we're not having our turkey lunch and getting together and having a few laughs and enjoying each other's company, at least the food drive's gonna happen. And of course, we have to again applaud our firefighters. I don't know whether any of you have seen the pictures of the mounds of toys that they have. But certainly, Chief, if you would take our comments back, in a year that you would think that nobody would be able to accomplish the help and the charity things, I think everything's been surpassed. So please let your staff know how pleased, how pleased we are. And, and from that too, just Merry Christmas to everybody. It's been a hell of a year, and I hope that twenty-one, twenty twenty-one has gotta be better. And I'm sure, I'm sure that it will. We'll just stick to it. And I admire each and every one of you for all the work, staff and council, that is done. We've come out with a few scars, but I don't think anybody has, has been terribly, terribly, terribly hurt by it. So, you know, good for all of us, all the best in twenty twenty-one to get back on track and shorter agendas. Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn into closed session. Resolve ourselves, resolve itself into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the municipal act in order to, first, adopt closed session minutes dated November twenty-fourth to discuss a position to be applied to negotiations to be carried on by the municipality under section two thirty-nine dash two dash K. And to, thirdly, to discuss five personnel matters, personal matters about identifiable individuals. Two thirty-nine dash two dash, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counsel Pennell. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Okay, back again. Thank you very much. I need a motion to rise and report from closed session. And that all recommendations made within closed session be hereby adopted, moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Councilor McCormack. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Within closed session, council approved the minutes from the closed session of council November the 24th, 2020. Council received information on negotiations to be carried out by the municipality. Council discussed five personal matters about identifiable individuals and provided staff direction on them. By law to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Greater Napanee, 2020. All in favor, oh sorry, moved by Councilor Johnson, seconded by Councilor Richardson. Got them right. All in favor of that motion?